It's warm in here, isn't it?
Yeah. Last night it was freezing. Today it's warmer. It's a little warm in here. Warm.
Warm?
Yep.
I know usually it's cold, but it's a little warm in here.
The world. The world is cold here.
Okay.
It sounded pretty bad.
Welcome to the committee of the whole meeting of the Cape Coral City Council. Today is September fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. This meeting now comes to order. Please stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Gunter.
Here.
Council members.
Hoffman.
Here.
Hayden.
Here.
Long.
Here.
Nelson.
Here.
Shepherd.
Here.
Tate.
Here.
Welsh.
Here.
All present.
Thank you. Item four is business. Four A is citizens' input. Citizens' input is a maximum of sixty minutes. The separate input of citizens on matters concerning city government, three minutes per individual. Please remember to state your name for the record. We'll be utilizing the podium to my left in front of the double doors.
Good morning. I'm Tom Shadrack, and I'm a permanent resident. I am on the Budget Review Committee, but I'm here today just speaking as a resident. Thank you. I've got a couple charts. It's gonna be some, a great day this morning to see all the projects that we have going on in our city, probably close to a hundred of them. And so, as a businessperson and a concerned citizen, these are the kind of questions I want to see answered today. I did review every one of the charts for today, and I didn't see, you know, in writing, how these things would be answered. So hopefully, the verbal presentation will do them. I just want to quickly run through them. And then, first, number one, what has changed since your last presentation? I've been listening to the briefs for two years, each quarter, and still don't see that type of input. What was the original budget for this project? Question two, what is the current projection cost for this project? Number four, real critical, what was the original schedule? And what is the current schedule? Basically, when is this project gonna be complete? And then, if they're behind on schedule or over cost, what help do they need to get back on track or make sure there's no more issues? Those are just five basic questions that the council should be asking. I know the city manager runs all this, and he probably should be asking twenty, thirty questions. But I think as stewards of our taxpayer money, those are the type of questions you should get today. And I just kind of looked at all those presentations, came up with quantities, seeing all the work that we have. I think, though, and I'll give a shout out to the utilities projects, they've probably done the best at answering those questions that I saw in their briefing. Number five, we've never looked at before, I think, in a summary level, the capital projects that were approved last year. So that'll be interesting to see when they'll get done. Then I just threw out there what's in the current budget for twenty-three, and look at all the additional work that we're gonna have. And I would suggest, as this council's decision process, are we giving too much to the city manager? And that could be something that you need to look at to make sure the projects that are on the books get done without being delayed further by all this new work that you may want to add. So just think those questions in mind as we go through. Hopefully, the presenters will kind of add to those and answer those questions. I'd appreciate it. And finally, the most important thing, God bless Cape Coral and God bless America. Thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor and Council. My name is Kevin Besser. I'm the Director of Public Policy for the Royal Palm Coast Realtor Association, and I'm here to talk about item number one on the agenda, the temporary sign ordinance. Unfortunately, I understand, the election here this year, I know there are a lot of temporary signs out in the city, and we've been victim to having signs that are unauthorized being put into our, into empty lots that we own as investment properties and see that there is an issue with these signs going up across the city. However, with the way the ordinance is written, I have to, we have to rise in opposition of this ordinance because of, real estate signs would be impacted by this. Currently, there are one thousand five hundred and ninety-eight active residential listing properties in Cape Coral. We can't assume that they all have signs, but ninety-five percent of them probably do have signs in their yard advertising that property for sale. When you add vacant land, it adds another two thousand seven hundred and fifty-nine properties into that, into that number. So about five thousand real estate signs are up in Cape Coral right now, to give or take. If we had to, that includes three hundred and four new listings a week. If we had to propose, if we had to put into the city clerk's office a, any kind of registration, I believe that we would overwhelm them, because we're just the real estate industry. This doesn't include construction, this doesn't include painters, this doesn't include all the other businesses who put up temporary signs in their yard. So I think this is going to be a huge impact to the city, and I have to, I have to thank the city manager for his staff for their fantastic memo they wrote, and I have to say, it's very oft, it's not very often in my job that I agree with city staff, but I have to say that I agree with city staff today, and I ask that you take up, take up their memo and keep that in mind as you decide this issue today. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak during citizens' input? Please come forward. Seeing none, citizens' input is now closed. Is there any council discussion on citizens' input? Okay, seeing none, we will move on, and Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If I may just respond to some of the comments made by Mr. Shadrack during citizens' input.
Yes, sir.
That's okay. So, Mr. Shadrack is requesting a level of detail that we're not currently including in our quarterly PowerPoint presentations to you, right? And the PowerPoint presentation is meant to be an overview of where we are with the progress in implementing several projects. If the council so desires, we could put together a detailed quarterly report that we could also publish in conjunction with the PowerPoint presentation. We can do that if you want that. My only concern, having been down this road before, is that putting together that report ends up becoming a full-time job for someone in the organization. And then, what I have experienced is, other than a handful of people, nobody really reads it. And so, it's a lot of work. I don't know what the payoff is, the return on the investment is gonna be by putting together a highly detailed report like that. But again, if that's something that council desires, we can, we can put something like that together. And then, with just one other point, and I appreciate Mr. Shadrack bringing the issue up and asking if perhaps there are too many capital projects on our list to be accomplished. And, and I would say, Mr. Mayor, that, no, I do not believe that there are too many capital projects on the list, because capital projects are typically multi-year projects, right? So they're not funded and expected to be delivered, most of them, in the same year, because they're typically of longer duration, and they span, especially construction projects, they may start one fiscal year, and it may take you three, four, five fiscal years to accomplish the project, depending on how complex the project is. So I think, so I don't think that you've approved too many projects for us, because we've got to get those projects started, and understanding that they take a long time to be completed, I would not in any way, shape, or form recommend diluting that project list, because we've got a lot of needs in the community, and we just, we have to move forward with these things. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, we will move on to the first item on the agenda, which is four B, one, temporary signs on vacant lot. This was brought forward by Councilmember Tate. So Councilmember Tate, I'll give you the floor.
Thank you. I'd rather hear from everyone else. I think this is a discussion to have. Whether this were to be pulled or moved forward is up to this council. We do seem to have a problem with temporary signs. However, in speaking to the city attorney, it's quite difficult to determine or to classify temporary signs, say, political signs versus real estate signs versus construction signs. So I understand the heartburn with this, and I'll wait to hear comments from the dais. Thank you.
Thank you. I've got a few comments as well. You know, reading the ordinance, as Councilmember Tate said, you know, we clearly got a issue here in the city with some types of signs, and I know that we cannot classify an ordinance to be specific on the temporary signs, and I understand that. My question to the city attorney would be, in reviewing the ordinance, you know, I, two things jump out at me. Number one, you know, it says property owner in the, in the ordinance, and there are circumstances where businesses throughout our community, other leases, that have a contractual agreement with a particular property owner, where I would consider to them a vested interest in that particular property as a result of that contractual agreement. Is there any way that we can craft the ordinance where not only the property owner can give authorization on these various signs, but also someone that has a contractual agreement with the property owner? And that, that agreement could be fairly broad. It could even, maybe even, address some of the items that the real estate industry brought up. Because, as you can see, there's many signs that are placed throughout the city. I personally believe that the city clerk's office probably couldn't accommodate those types of signs. But as we know, this is a temporary sign ordinance, not just for real estate. It could be for builders. It could be for a business owner that is allowed by code to put a temporary sign up out in front of their, of their business. They may not be the property owner, they may be the lesee. So is there any way we can kind of craft into the ordinance where we address some of those things, but we don't violate, you know, the case law that's already been put in place? And one of the, you know, by far, I'm not an attorney, but one of, one of the things that, you know, I thought that maybe we could try to implement in there after maybe section three is, at the last sentence, where there are some, the twenty-four continuous hours are exempt for the provision, or if said property owner has entered into a contractual agreement with another person or business to have a vested interest or right in that designated property. Is there any way that we could maybe incorporate that somewhere within the ordinance where there was a contractual agreement of some sort? And that, that contractual agreement could be a very broad statement that we could incorporate into this type of ordinance where we don't have some of the problems that we know would probably exist in the current form.
So the short answer to your question is yes. Could we do that? Yes. So, but let's, let's break the terms of the ordinance down for a minute, because even without the change that this ordinance would be doing, every temporary sign is supposed to be on property for which they already have the property owner's permission. So, everybody, and that's been the case. It's, this is not changing it. What this is doing is saying is that if you are on vacant, unimproved property, you have to have the owner's written permission, and that written permission should be on file with the clerk's office. So it's not, if I'm putting a temporary sign in front of my business, whether I'm, whether that business is currently operated by a lessie or not, because that is supposed to already have the property owner's permission, just not, it's just not required to be in writing. So I want to make sure that we're all talking about the same thing, that we're talking about vacant, unimproved properties in the city. Now, in answer to your question, yes. Could, could this draft be revised so that it doesn't refer to only the owner? It could be the owner, lessie, or some other person in charge of the property, such as a property manager. We could do that. I, when we drafted it, I don't think we were thinking that too many vacant properties are actually operating under current leases, but maybe they are, I don't, who am I to say? So, but yes, that kind of a change could be made. It wouldn't necessarily have to be exclusively the property owner, if that is the council's pleasure. Because that doesn't have anything to do with the content of the signs.
That was one part of my question, and the other part is, could we incorporate in the ordinance somewhere about the clause if there's a contractual agreement of some sort with a property owner? Give you an example, you know, like, it could be either, real estate could be one, a listing agreement, it could be an agreement with a contractor that's gonna be building a house there that they want to put their sign up. There are just two examples, there's many more. So is there any way that we could incorporate something into the ordinance that states if an individual has a contractual agreement with the property owner or their designee?
The individual putting up the sign, or the individual in control of the property?
The individual that is in control of the property. So in other words, if I have a contractual agreement with a property owner to build a house, to sell the property, whatever the case may be, that I would have the, and then the contractual agreement, if we had a contractual agreement, then the, we wouldn't have to have a written permission, because we basically have some type of a vested interest in that property in whatever means, whether it's selling the property, building on the property. So I don't know if broadly, we could incorporate something to that fact into the ordinance that says if...
I think, well, I, I think that if that agreement provides the permission of the owner to put up a sign, then the person putting up the sign could always file that agreement with the clerk, because it would say in there, this gives Bobby Builder the ability to put up a temporary sign on my property. But to have any kind of a contractual arrangement, and that that would just give somebody the right to put up a sign, it would appear to be a little bit broad. But this kind of language regarding the sign permission could be put into more of these contracts. For example, if I'm a Realtor and I have a contract with the property owner to sell the property, in my listing agreement, I could have, this gives the, this Realtor the ability to erect a temporary sign on my property for the duration of this listing agreement, for example, a real estate sign. Because in theory, if, if, just because I have a contract with the owner doesn't mean that the owner knows what kind of sign I'm gonna be putting up on their property or has given permission for me to put it up.
Right. I guess my...
But could we do it? Yes.
Yeah, my intent here is if there is a contractual agreement, it possibly states that, then they wouldn't have to submit the documentation to the city's clerk's office, except for maybe if requested to do so. So then, they're not getting inundated with all of these documents, have to provide some type of storage of these documents. But that exclusion in this ordinance would only be if there is a written agreement, contractual agreement, that maybe specifies that you're allowed to advertise on said property.
Well, that's the difference between the vacant, unimproved property and the rest. Right now, they're supposed to have the permission. It's not required to be in writing. So even as we're sitting here and speaking, all of those five thousand signs or whatever that I heard the representative of the Real Estate Association talk about, all of those properties are supposed to have the permission of the owner for putting up temporary signs. Now, the, I think that what, putting a, a, a written permission on file with the clerk does is it aids in the enforcement. So if I'm a code enforcement officer and I'm driving down the street and I see a vacant, unimproved property, and that property has a sign on it, I can contact the clerk's office and I can say, is there, is there a permission on file for this property? And the answer would come back yes or no. Other than that, it's not requ, I mean, if the council wants to require a written permission, but does not want to require it to be on file with the clerk, but only that the property owner or the property owner's representative would make it available upon demand, we could do that. That change could be done. As I said, I think the reason for the present requirement that's in the present draft regarding on file with the clerk was to aid in the enforcement of the ordinance, but it's not
Okay. I'll open up to listen to the rest of my colleagues. Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you, Mayor. Excuse me. I understand why we brought this forward, and it, to me, it's very unfortunate that there were a few violators that caused this, this resurgence of this ordinance. My concern is, is given that it will affect the brokers and the real estate industry so much, my concern is, couldn't they, couldn't, couldn't the brokers and the, and the Realtors police this themselves? In other words, and, and couldn't property owners police this themselves? So in other words, if, if there are, you know, not authorized signs on properties, couldn't they just police it and, and ask the individual to remove it or remove it themselves? I mean, I'm just, you know, my concern is, is that, is that, you know, because we had a few, a few mishaps and a few unfortunate entities that, that did this, it's now causing an even bigger issue for, you know, one of our, our larger economic drivers in the city. So that's, that would be my comment, is, is couldn't we just allow individuals to police this individually? I mean, I know where we're going. I, I loved last, you know, in two thousand and seventeen, when we had to have science, sign affidavits. I mean, that made sense for, for our uses, and maybe it didn't make sense for the brokers and the Realtors, but, you know, or maybe there's a way we can just specify, but it's my understanding that we can't. You know, we can't just say for political signs only, or for Realtor signs only. It seems like it has to be a blanket ordinance. So I would just, you know, maybe give some thought to allowing individuals to police this themselves. I don't know. I'll wait and hear from everyone else. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Welsh.
Thank you, Mayor. Like Councilmember Nelson said, we know why this got brought up, but I am in agreeance that trying to craft this a certain way, or trying to add a certain contractual agreement is just, is just going to twist everything up. I think this is simple. I think it's written the way it needs to be. I don't think we need to put the burden on the city clerk's office to have to file owner's permission. It does affect the real estate sign. So every real estate sign out there would then have to have a written permission on, on vacant land, and there's a lot of vacant land in Cape Coral. We're only half built out. So I, I don't think we need to add this to code enforcement's listed duties. There's plenty of signs on improved properties that don't follow the sign code. I could drive down Skyline Boulevard from my house and point out even Realtor signs that are not to code. So I would prefer we focus on the signs that we have than try to chase signs every two years. So I think we could handle this with just having Kimberly inform everyone, which I know she does a great job at, but expressing to them that they need to have permission before blanketing the city with signs. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm gonna go to Councilmember Long now, give everybody the opportunity to weigh in at least one time.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, like, I don't think it's any secret when these individuals put these signs up that they're not aware that they're violating the code. So, you know, in a perfect world, these individuals would act with integrity and, and sort of self-regulate. Unfortunately, they have not, so we're here having this discussion. As it's drafted, I think it's a cumbersome process, it's a, it's a short, or a long-term cumbersome solution to a potentially short-term problem. You know, my question would be whether maybe, dealing with all these intricacies and, and requiring that everybody do one upfront as a blanket, we cast it a wide net, would it be possible, Madam City Attorney, to maybe implement some sort of clause that would allow us the opportunity to request written authorization upon a complaint, for example, or something of that nature, rather than making everybody do it upfront and then us collecting a database, essentially, to reference?
If I understand you correctly, would it be possible, instead of having it on file with the clerk, that they just be able to produce written permission from the owner upon request? Yes. I think I, right, I think I had just indicated that.
You intimated it a little bit, but it wasn't, it grabbed traction. But yeah, that, I mean, if we're talking about a situation where it's, it's gonna be cumbersome to enforce, and I would, I would agree with the speaker that indicated the large amount that we have just in real estate alone. But to be able to have a mechanism that we would have some sort of ability to enforce on an individual basis, because the only way that this is really gonna, even if it is enacted as it's written, the only way to enforce it would be on a complaint-only basis. I mean, there's no way that we could dedicate the time to go around and have the code enforcement officers, it was estimated here, several hours per case. But if we were able to somehow implement or redraft the code so that we're able to do what we had just discussed on a complaint-only basis, we have the authority to request written authorization showing that they had approval for that specific site, and then we would deal with the, the intricacies of the enforcement at that point in time. Just a thought.
Yes, I think that we could require that on the vacant, unimproved properties, that they are able to produce the written permission of the property owner, and it could go so far as to say, or the property owner's representative, which would potentially include lessies, if there are any on that property, or property managers, for example.
Right, an authorized representative to be.
We could do that. That could be done, and, and it could be, that kind of a provision could be included, yes.
I think that, that would be a happy medium for me, I think, so that we're not, you know, inundating the city with additional work that, you know, they kind of, they get caught in a larger net when really the problem is more minute than the entire real estate industry, for example, or the roofers or anything like that. Thank you.
Councilmember Cosin.
Thank you, Mayor. So Dolores, clarify something. In this ordinance that we're looking at, the draft, it says temporary signs are prohibited in the right of way. But I was under the impression that that was already the case. Isn't that, today, that's not the case? Can temporary signs be in the right of way right now?
Prohibited today.
They're prohibited today.
They are prohibited today, in the right of way.
So most of the signs that I've seen littered across the city, election signs, are in the right of way. So first, let me say, I agree with Councilmember Long on what we should do going forward. But I just want to point out, code could address this situation now without this ordinance, the, the issue with all the election signs. They could do a sweep, and am I right?
Any temporary sign that's in the right of way would be in violation of the ordinance currently.
Okay. So I'd like to see that happen. I, I don't think I've seen code picking up any signs, so go ahead, Mr. City Manager.
Councilmember Cosin, both code enforcement and public works are actively, and even people in the city manager's office, myself included, I've got a ton of improperly placed temporary signs in the back of the city vehicle. So we are actively out there on a daily basis, removing the signs that are improperly placed in the right of way. Unfortunately, they just, as soon as we pick them up, they, somebody comes back up, out and plops them back in the right of way again. So it's almost a losing ending battle during election season. But I want you to know that we are on it.
That's good to hear. That's what I wanted to hear. I think if we, if we were to go with this ordinance the way it's written, it would be a nightmare for code and for the clerk's office. And I, I don't like the idea of having an owner file paperwork to put a sign on their own property or their designee. So that's where I am. Thank you.
Yeah, one would hope that a candidate running for office would have the integrity and the ethics to reach out to the property owner to at least get their verbal permission to put up a sign. And any candidate that wouldn't do that, I would have very deep concerns about them serving up on this dais anyway. The ordinance, obviously, in its current form, and I think it's already been the consensus up here, here, is it's not gonna work if an amendment can be made to the current ordinance where if a complaint is filed, as, as Councilmember Long said, that we could address that and enforce that. I could, I could see that, to me, that's the only positive that can... I could, I could see that, to me, that's the only positive that can, that can come out of this without putting undue work on the clerk's office, on code enforcement, or whatever. But we've certainly seen campaign signs that aren't approved go up, ramp up over the last several, several years. And that's unfortunate that we even have to, even have to deal with it. But I'm not for this ordinance. I am for what councilmember Long suggested about dealing with complaints. Thanks, Mayor.
To give a real quick, you know, one of my concerns in the ordinance was, you know, I thought it may pose a problem, that we're taking care of one problem, but I think we're not handling the problem on the other side. But I definitely agree and would support councilmember Long's suggestion that upon request, the city could require written permission at any time for any vacant properties. That would take the burden off of different municipalities. I think it would keep the innovation of documentation with this current ordinance as proof with the problem perhaps of the city. So I definitely would support something that councilmember Long, councilmember.
Thank you all for the conversation. And obviously, we need some work. And since I will be departing, I am going to give this to councilmember Long to go ahead, to go ahead and fix.
I second that.
And I think that that would be an appropriate move at this time. I did want to say too, you know, in the real estate industry, when we do a vacant land listing contract, it does say that we have the opportunity to put up a sign and to market the property. So we have permission on file if someone should need it. We do have fraud going on in this city on vacant land, and it, it is starting to get a, to be a bigger problem. So that will be helpful to have something that councilmember Long puts in the ordinance. And I look forward to that. And I appreciate everyone's comments. Madam City Attorney, I'm sorry that we had to work on this in a timeframe, but I think in the long run, it is time well spent and conversation that we needed to have. And I agree wholeheartedly with councilmember Hayden. If you are a candidate running for office and you can't put up a legal sign, I don't know what's going to happen when you're sitting up here and doing something legal, because it is rampant throughout the city and it's not attractive to the city residents that have to see it every day. Thank you.
Councilmember Hayden, did you have another?
No, no, that was.
Any other comments? I think the consensus is, having the city attorney work with councilmember Long and his suggestion, and then maybe councilmember Long can bring that forward and another committee of the whole week. So we can have.
I'd be happy to carry the torch. Thank you.
I'll be happy to do that as well.
I was, I was intimating that, maybe I, I thought I did, but we all knew better.
You were told, straight up.
We knew better.
Okay, we'll move on to, I don't know, 4D2, which is the little way navigation.
Me again. Thank you, Mayor. So this is one that I, I volunteered to bring forward rather than one that was sprung upon me. This one, I think, is pretty simple in nature. I'm going to, while Mr. Ilchism is queuing it up, kind of give you the summary. I was on the boat with the Marine Police Unit in Northwest Spreader, and it had come to my attention that there was a, a small change in an ordinance that could be made to help some isolated instances, like the one you see here on the pictures that he's showing, where the current ordinance doesn't prohibit mooring of a vessel in a manner similar to this, which, again, admittedly doesn't happen at a high volume, but in the few instances that it does, it creates an infringement on the navigation of a particular waterway. So to me, the simple version, and that doesn't always work in the government, and you'll see why we had to make some different changes in the ordinance, is to just create a rule of thirds. So the rule of thirds typically in the ordinance would be that no boat could be moored in a manner that would impede within the middle third of the canal to, you know, restrict vessels coming in to and fro. So Mr. Ilchism will elaborate a little further on how we got to the ordinance here, but that's sort of the intent, was to restrict those isolated incidents where it creates a, a blockage to the navigation. So that, I'll hand it over to Mr. Ilchism. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning, Mayor and Council. Mike Ilchism, Public Works Director. Before you this morning is the draft ordinance that we have that preserves what we're calling the navigation fairway preservation. And the intent, as councilmember Long just mentioned, is to take that center portion of a canal, preserve it for navigation, take the rim channel around any lake basin or the edge of the city in the Kalusatchie River and preserve that for navigation. We had a previous version of this ordinance that went before the Waterway Advisory Committee. Its approach was more mooring prohibition, so it was trying to outline basically where you could not moor your vessel because of the discussion we had at the Waterway Advisory Board regarding people that are temporarily moored, like fishermen or people that are stopping to pick up a child that they were tubing with. We felt it was better to regroup and basically just go after what the intent of the ordinance is, which is to preserve that navigation fairway in the cities. So in the ordinance, pretty straightforward, we divine, define what a boat is, define what, what it, what being moored is, and then from there, we basically go into the restrictions, which basically says the center thirty percent of any canal or within the rim channel is excluded from mooring. So basically, straightforward. And then I believe the city manager, Rob, you wanted to bring up defines for the, if somebody violates this.
I, I do. Thank you, Mike, for bringing, for bringing that up. In the proposed language that Mike is, has on the elbow, on the Elmo, it says, there we go, in paragraph, sub-paragraph C, it says, "A citation for a violation may be issued to the registered owner or person in control of the subject boat." So my understanding is that if the police department issues a citation, the penalty for that violation is forty dollars. What I'd like to recommend to city council when we bring this back for, for official action is that we mirror the language that's contained elsewhere in the Code of Ordinances and specifically Section 114, and change the amount of the citation from forty dollars to a hundred dollars for the first violation and two hundred dollars for any subsequent violation.
One question I have is, what's the definition of violation? Because you know as well as I do, if a person is mooring a boat there, and whether the fine is forty dollars or a hundred dollars, is that a violation on that particular day? You know, is it a timeframe before the police department would go out on a second, and issue a second violation? Because I can tell you, if it's just a hundred dollar fine in one, one occurrence, I, I bet you'll have a lot of people pay that hundred dollars or not pay the hundred dollars and just let it sit there. So I guess my question would be, maybe for our police chief, how do, how would we enforce this, no matter what the fine is and what is the definition of a violation?
Morning, Anthony Sizewor, Police Chief. I think the spirit or intent of this ordinance is for navigation of canals, not what is all in our mind when we think about biminy basin or abandoned borderline derelict vessels. There's a procedure for that. This would not interfere or compete or impede us in that process. I think if you look at the, the photo that was shown, this is a way for us to go make contact for somebody who either selfishly, carelessly, or inadvertently has moored their boat or tied up their boat to impede navigation. So if you have somebody who has a derelict or broken-down vessel there, there is provisions in that process to move it. We can't tow it or completely remove it, but to get it out of the navigable waterway. So I don't see this as a competitive ordinance or anything that would challenge that existing process, if that answers your question.
It does somewhat. My, my question is, a police officer goes out, notices a violation, issues a violation. What type of timeframe before a second violation that was mentioned would be issued?
I think a reasonable timeframe would be the following day, especially if you're talking about something that's impeding navigation. I would, I would assume that if I'm a police officer who gets summoned to that residence, we'll run the FL number, find out who the registered owner is, and immediately go make contact and tell them to move it. And that should, I would think, in the majority of cases remedy the situation without even a citation being issued. The, the goal of this is to keep the, the waterway navigable for other boaters. If you become a repeat violator after a situation like that, then I think the fines would start immediately and it would be a daily subsequent occurrence for us.
So my question to you would be, if you had the availability at some point to relocate the vehicle, as you had mentioned, the boat, the vessel, would it be helpful for you in the ordinance if the boat is not relocated within a specific amount of time? To make sure it's crystal clear in the ordinance that it could be relocated, would that, would that help you in your enforcement efforts?
It wouldn't harm us. I don't, I don't know if it would necessarily help us. I think the, what we would do is immediately get this, get this thing moved. And if it's not, the, the, if they haven't moved it after we've knocked on the door and told them to move it or reached them by phone, then having it in an ordinance, I, I don't think they're going to follow that either, so we'll have to take other action.
Okay.
So it wouldn't be harmful, but it, I don't think it would aid.
Thank you. My last question is for the city attorney. Most of these boats, I would assume, would be tied up to an existing dock. That's an extension of the property at that particular location. And I noticed that we had said that we would, I guess, give a citation to the boat owner, the vessel owner. Is there anything that we could possibly add into the ordinance where we hold the property owner liable as well? Because once you tie that rope up to the dock, to me, that's an extension of that, of that property owner.
So let me start by answering the question that you were asking the police chief. We could insert language in the ordinance to clarify that every, every day is a new violation. We could do that and no problem, could definitely do that. In answer to your second question, yes, there's absolutely no problem withholding the property owner responsible, because when the chief indicates, well, we could call the person, you don't necessarily know who the person in control of the boat is. You may reach Mary Sue Jones, who owns the property, and she may say, I didn't even know that boat was tied up. But we could do that and we could make them both responsible, both the property and, a property owner and the person in control. When we were working on this ordinance with staff, staff indicated very strongly that it wanted to go after the, that staff wanted to pursue this the way they do a parking violation, that they did not want to go after the property owner as the default for those that were tied up to them. But we could do that. It's, it's not that we can't do that.
Yeah, because my only concern.
In fact, if we wanted to, we could even have the option available of the code enforcement process against the property owner, which would lead to a potential lien on the property. I know.
Yeah, one of my concerns is, and I'm, I'm sure the chief would attest to this, is sometimes it's difficult to contact those boat owners. You know, we have various vessel-type issues throughout the city, and sometimes they're either out of state, out of country. So I want to make sure that we can take care of the problem. You know, if that's a timeframe that we put into the ordinance, because I, I want to make sure that we can address the issue in a timely manner. If we're running around the country or outside the country trying to notify someone, all that's going to do is impede your efforts.
If I may, it could be, there could be a situation where somebody is tied off to a dock and the, the property owner is, is not here. It could be a dock on an unimproved property. That happens a lot as well. And I could just envision a scenario where if I'm a property owner and I have this repeat violator, I, I think I'd find a way to make that a free-floating derelict vessel pretty quick if I'm going to be subject to the code process.
Right. So for me, I, in summary, I support the efforts. I just want to make sure that mainly the police chief, since he will be enforcing it, can sign off on it, to make sure there is language in the ordinance that gives the police department the necessary means to enforce it. There's no reason to adopt the ordinance if we, if we cannot enforce it. So that's my concern. As long as you tell me you're comfortable with it, I'm comfortable with it. And that's, you know, how we will move forward, at least for me.
Please note, please note, Mr. Mayor, that subsection C refers to the fact that when a boat is secured to a private mooring structure, a rebuttable presumption exists that the owner of the mooring structure is the person in control of the subject boat.
Thank you. Councilmember Hayden?
Yeah, I think, I think I look at this as similar to a car. If you're illegally parked, you're going to get a ticket. So pretty much, we're not, we're not going to try and track down the boat owner, maybe not that day right on the spot. We may just put a ticket on the windshield, basically, right? And then the owner of that boat is responsible for paying that ticket over a period of time. And if they don't, like a parking ticket or any other ticket, it could be, they could face further fines, correct?
You are correct. There'd be a little bit more effort on the boat scenario because the frequency of somebody coming back to their car is potentially greater than somebody coming back to a boat. But you're correct in that parallel.
And if it's moored there for a longer period of time, to me, that enters into derelict boat possibilities, which, you know, are already covered. And as far as putting responsibility on the property owner, to me, that would be tough. If that's the only dock in the area and this guy real quick wants to go talk to a neighbor for a couple hours, the only way to get there, I can come up with a lot of different scenarios where it may not be the owner's responsibility for that particular boat based on what might be available in that area. It's no different than double parking somewhere just because you want to run in somewhere and take care of something, but all of a sudden, there's a police officer there and says, all right, this boat is, is illegally parked. So, you know, I, I know we probably don't have a lot of this happening, but blocking any waterway, obviously, is a concern, just like it would be blocking any road. So I, I am in favor of this. Typically, for most things, it's education first. But with this particular one, if, if a boat, and I'll just use the term illegally parked or in the, in the waterway, we're going to go right with the ticket unless the owner happens to be there. Let's say he's talking to his friend on the dock and just ties up there on the dock. If the, if the owner happens to be present at the time, could it be an education first thing, said, look, you can't, you got to move your boat?
Right.
Could that happen first before we automatically issue a?
Yes, that's the preferred method for most. And this is Cape Coral, there's an infinite number of scenarios, and it will probably be the craziest one that happens. But I think the true most frequent use of this would be a homeowner who's either not paying attention or not playing nice with others that's parking his or her boat, that's not allowing other boats to navigate out for a boating day. And the first order of business would be to educate and, and have them move it or find a better place to permanently moor their boat on their own property. And if they refuse to do that, this ordinance gives us the ability to incentivize them to do that. Sure. Thanks, Mayor.
Councilmember Long?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I just wanted to pile on to the, what I think the mayor was going, is to make sure that we have some sort of provision that this, if it continues to be a violation beyond the original warning or what have you, if it continues to be an issue, that it's a daily compounding fee. Because I think, I think what he was getting at was, in some instances, if it's a thousand or a hundred dollars for the month, you know, and we wait, I mean, that's a heck of a lot cheaper than the five hundred dollars it would cost you to rent that slip in the waterway. So yeah, it's going to have to be, in my opinion, a, a daily violation as far as the, the fine accruing. Thank you.
Councilmember Shepard?
Yes, I, I agree with councilmember Long just said. And to add to that, could we have an escalator? Meaning, you know, I'm sure that their first offense, there's a warning, their second offense, they're getting a ticket. But if we keep a record of that, escalate if they, if they keep doing it, so that their, the penalty is greater and greater and greater, like we do with irrigation. Because with some people, a hundred dollars might not be a big deal and, you know, I mean, we don't have enough people to go out there and, and check every single canal all the time to make sure that boats aren't obstructing the roadway. But would this, another question I have, would this be used like in lakes and places where it's not a narrow canal, it's like a big body of water? Would they be allowed to put the boat on the outside of their dock like we saw in the picture? Because that's not really impeding, like where, where would we? Like, where would we, is it defined?
Yeah, so in section B two, which is a rim channel, so in all lakes and basins, we don't dredge the entire lake and basin. What we do is we dredge a navigation fairway around the perimeter, which is just outside the marine improvement zone. So the way section B two is written is that the first 40 feet in that lake, which covers that marine improvement zone, is okay to have boats, structures, docks, and lifts. Then that next 30 feet, similar to the 30 feet in the center of a canal, is preserved as the rim channel.
And the other question I have would be, if it is impeding traffic, do we have the ability to tow like we would an automobile?
There's statutes related to what you can and can't do with vessels. I don't know if it's the same as with a boat, but I do know that routinely, if there is an issue where there is a boat or a vessel that is impeding navigation, sometimes the police department just moves it, you know, ever so slightly out of the way. We don't tow it to a, like a salvage yard or haul it out of the water, but it just basically gets moved to where it's no longer a safety issue.
And the other thing I wanted to bring up, I was talking extensively to the city manager about different codes besides, you know, this. And a lot of the problems are, a lot of citizens just don't care and they never pay the fine and they accept the lien on their property. Is there any ways we can avoid that so that we don't get certain repeat offenders that just say, you know, just put another lien on my house? Is this going to be the same type of ticket process or penalty process? I don't know.
So that is that subsection C. Initially, this is being treated, as everybody's discussed, that where we are looking at this along with the marine unit and the police department, as the owner or the operator of the vessel is the first person we are going to go after. So whoever is in operational control of that vessel, just like when you go to park in a parking lot or if you go to park on a street right-of-way, our canals are canal right-of-ways. The initial intent is to issue the citation to that owner-operator who is in control of that vessel. Hey, you've illegally done, performed this action, please move it. Then it goes to the second section, which is, there is also a presumption that the owner is the person who is, basically has that mooring structure. So basically, we can go out onto the land and reach to that person, but they can rebut and say, hey, you know, this is not my cousin or this is not my boat. This is some unrelated disinterested person who tied off.
And does this go on their driver's license? So if it's an unpaid ticket, it's treated like what happens when you don't pay tickets? You can possibly lose your driver's license for unpaid tickets?
Madam City Attorney, do you want to handle that one or I can?
I think that's one you should handle because I don't know anything. I don't know much about issuing no tickets, so.
Right.
The other one I have to throw at you, I'm sorry, I'm just trying to think of a-
It gets filed in county court and if it becomes unresolved, ultimately, there can be a bench warrant for somebody for failure to appear. That's a longer-term part of the process, but there has to be acknowledgement of receipt of it, actually issued the citation, and they were given a court date. They refused to pay the citation, refused to show up in court. There can be a county bench warrant. That's a rarity in these because the majority of, if a citation is issued, especially on the first one, it's because we weren't able to contact the owner. So actual physical control of the violator as far as jail, that is a possibility. It's not ultimately a probability.
And the last one I would like to bring up is, especially where I live, there's a lot of rental properties and people from around the world, not even from this country, rent boats. So what would happen in that situation where you have somebody that's here for maybe a week or two, they rent a boat, they break the law repeatedly because they don't care? Is there a way that we combat that or is it just a loophole that we have to deal with?
It's similar to renting a car. And if you get traffic citations or toll violations when you rent a car, it's in the fine print from the rental company, the owner of the vessel. And it may be something that's found out later and that's in most contracts too, is tickets will come back to the registered owner, be it Avis Rent-A-Car or it could be ABC Boats. When that comes, they'll have your information and they'll charge the credit card for those violations. It's typically how that works.
Thank you. Councilmember Welsh.
Thank you, Mayor. I have no objections with any of this. This was a great example of what city council is meant to do. We saw a problem and we created a policy that fixes it. So I want to thank Councilmember Long for acknowledging this and taking the time to put this forward for us to vote on. Thank you.
Madam City Attorney, I see your light on. Do you have another comment?
Yes. So if the council is interested in being able to pursue this both as a citation and through the code enforcement, depending on the selection, then I think we need that direction because the way the ordinance is written right now, it doesn't take you there. It takes you to, as we're all, that's why we're all circling the conversation about what do we do about illegally parked cars and who's in charge and is it a rental and all of that is because, and there's nothing wrong with that. I mean, the ordinance right now, as it's written, is involving a citation. And I think I've already gotten the, what I felt was a direction to change it, to clarify that each individual day would be a separate violation. But right now, the way the ordinance is written, it's a citation. It's not taking them through the code enforcement process. If you're interested in being able to do both of those things, we would need to make revisions to the ordinance, but we want to make sure that we're carrying forward the intention of council.
I guess before I open the floor to comment on that, Chief Sizemore, I'd like to hear your recommendation. Do you feel that it would be more advantageous for the police department to handle this type of violation or do you think it would be more advantageous for code enforcement? Or do you think that could be a combined effort?
I think by doing it the way that the city attorney just proposed it, it would be a joint effort if need be. It would be better to have the tools and not need them than need them in that rare situation and not have them and then come back before you guys again asking for an amendment. Meanwhile, somebody's still pained with having to deal with it. So if you're asking my recommendation, I would recommend that you add that code enforcement component to it. We can handle it initially, which would handle most of them, and then if it becomes a really extreme problem, then we can work alongside code enforcement for that.
Okay. For me personally, I would support that effort where it maybe says and/or, as far as it could be the police department, it could be code enforcement, like you had mentioned. I do believe there needs to be a component in there that it's a, at some point, there is a daily fine if an individual fails to move the boat. So I would like to see some type of terminology in the ordinance that specifies that as well. Councilmember Long.
Yeah, I agree. I think while we're here, I think we need to make sure that we include everything that allows us the opportunity to enforce it. It took six months to get here, so why not make sure that we do it right so that we don't have to come back and start this process all over again? Again, since we're, I guess she needs a consensus, my opinion, which I've already stated, would be to include that component as well as including the daily recurring violation fee. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Shepard.
And I just wanted to repeat, are my fellow council members interested in escalation for repeat offenders? So there's some type of deterrent because to some people, the hundred dollar fine might not be a big deal. They might come here every season and break the law and just figure, I'll pay the hundred bucks. So with a repeat escalator, I think that would be a deterrent.
Well, I think that's something that we kind of talked about with the daily, to me, if it's a hundred dollar fine, if they don't, if they don't move it, then that hundred dollar fine is on a daily basis.
Yeah, but if they come back next year, if we have it in the system that they've already were an offender and the next season comes and they do it again, their fine would be greater.
Yeah, but that would be a different component of it. You know, so I'll open that discussion up as well.
Yeah, I don't know. I mean, at some point, I think we get to where we're splitting hairs. I mean, it could be a situation that we could include that, but I think a hundred dollars a day, it's much cheaper even if you accrued five days' worth of fines to store your boat elsewhere than to have this continue to go on. So I certainly appreciate that thought because, yeah, there are some individuals that say, hey, I'll just eat the fine because it's not worth it, my hassle. But at a daily violation rate, I think that racks up pretty quickly to where that situation would resolve itself. But again, I'll open the floor to any other input.
Councilmember Tate.
Yeah, it is, the daily violation is what's going to get at. And to Councilmember Sheppards, repeat, people for the following year, houses sell every day, so you're going to have a new person or you're going to have a new renter who has no experience in boats. So I just think the daily fine is the same that we do for a lot of different things. Code doesn't have a boat, so I don't know how code will actually work in tandem with the police department, other than they can go out and talk to the resident. But just as a side note, I agree. I think that it needs a little bit of tweaking to put the language in there for the fines and they should be daily. I think that will get anyone's attention and I support those changes.
And I think that, two things, we have to make sure crystal clear for Councilmember Long to move forward with the city attorney's office. I support the hundred dollar fine, not the forty dollar fine, and I support some type of repeat daily fine in the ordinance where if it's not moved, that that fine is on a daily basis. So I would support something similar to that. So I think it's important to make sure Councilmember Long is crystal clear how to move forward. So I think, you know, is that the consensus that the board has?
A hundred dollars each day.
Right.
Exactly.
I support that.
Okay. Everybody okay with that? All right. Does it give you the direction you're looking for there?
Thank staff and city manager's office and the police department for working together to bring this closer to a resolution. So, thank you.
And last thing I just wanted to mention and also that I failed to is the, we're going to add into it where either code compliance or the police department can enforce. Everybody's in agreement with that as well? Okay. All right. Mr. City Manager, have any questions pertaining to that topic?
No, sir.
All right. We'll move on to item 4B3, which is our mobile food vendor ordinance. And I will turn that over to Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Hard to believe, it seems like it was so long ago, but in April, we had a conversation with council about a proposed ordinance to address mobile food vehicles and also mobile food courts. At that time, I think that was the second bite at the apple that staff undertook to bring something before council to move forward your goals and expectations for this type of ordinance. And I think we fell short at that time and then you directed us to essentially draft some language that mirrors language that was recently adopted by the Lee County Board of County Commissioners. So we're here this morning, Mr. Mayor, to bring back a proposed ordinance that does that. But in addition, I don't believe Lee County has in their ordinance language that deals with mobile food courts. And so we went out and we researched other communities that have such language and I think we found some language in Bonita Springs. And then we're also proposing that as part of this ordinance, at least for discussion today, to get your feedback and to get direction. So I'm going to turn it over now, I believe, to Mr. Patrick White.
Thank you, sir. Good morning, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. For the record, Patrick White, senior planner downstairs in your planning department, city planning department. This, I have a short presentation for you this morning. As you probably recall, we've been trying, the city has contemplated regulating food trucks for a long time. The current code does not provide any regulations. Presently, a food truck would get a business tax receipt. They do not get a certificate of zoning compliance like a traditional business would in a brick-and-mortar building. Therefore, none of the existing food trucks are grandfathered. So they, every food truck that is present in the city would need to comply with these regs. In 2020, a House bill was passed, basically preempting a lot of local government control. Basically, it said that the city cannot ban at a citywide level, mobile food vendors or mobile food dispensing vehicles. As the city manager noted, we brought two recent versions or drafts of this code, the most recent being during April 13th, when you indicated that you were interested in like the Lee County code. So we rewrote the proposed regulations for mobile food vendors, largely adapted from that county code. As the city manager noted, there weren't any provisions for mobile food courts. We did find some good ones in Bonita Springs. An interesting thing to note about this ordinance as proposed, it does not go effective until after 90 days of adoption to provide a little time for some of these mobile food vendors to get into compliance or make other arrangements. So there's four main parts to the proposed code. There's the use table, the specific regulations by district, the actual guts of the code and the conditional use standards, and some definitions. The definition for a mobile food dispensing vehicle, that's the one that's provided by the state. The mobile food vendor is what we are grouping these food trucks, is what we're calling them, this is how we're regulating them, they're going to be called mobile food vendors. I won't read it for you, but we'll display it on the screen. Note that it includes similar self-propelled conveyances. So we're talking, that would include ice cream trucks, hot dog carts, or a non-fixed structure, like a food vendor cart. A mobile food court is a permitted group of mobile food vendors that would be located on one particular site, that would provide some common infrastructure for those to operate. And we'll get a little bit deeper in that brief in a moment. So these are our mobile food vendors. These are on-the-go vehicles. They have a license to operate from the state. They are generally, they are self-contained. These are something a little different. These are mobile food vendors that have deployed extra things on their property or on someone else's property. They've deployed tents, they've deployed seating, they've deployed fences. This code would prohibit that. And as we talk further about the code, I will describe why. So the current code is going to exempt a vehicle that's operating at a private event for less than one day. So when you have your special event at your property and you want to have it catered by a mobile food vendor, they can come and operate briefly without trouble. The code exempts any vehicle operating as part of a special event because these are large coordinated things that the city provides a permit for. And it exempts vehicles operating towards a state of emergency. It's generally going to allow them in our non-residential zoning districts, provided that they meet the code. It's going to prohibit them in residential zoning districts with one exception. We did provide a provision to allow ice cream vehicles to, or ice cream trucks, ice cream vehicles, to work in some of the right-of-way within these residential districts. It will allow them to operate in city parks, in city parking lots, on other city property or other government-owned property with the city's permission. So there would be some application process to be decided on how many we might let work in a particular park or parking lot. But it does not grant, it does not grant them the ability to just go out there and start selling food from a city parking lot or a city park. So notably, there's four main changes that I'd like to highlight that were different from the old ordinance to the new one. This new code requires that a mobile food vendor leaves the property when not vending. It prohibits tents, tarps, and seating. It prohibits a permanent water and wastewater connection and it limits their signs. Eleven of the 17 codes that are the guts of this code were adapted from Lee County. Thank you, Lee County, for writing a great code. The mobile food court is a slightly different, slightly different animal. There's a number of them. They're increasing in popularity. They are, there's one in Celebration Park. We've probably heard of this one, maybe been to it. There's a new one in Disney Springs. There's another in St. There's another in St. Augustine. Notice that these are basically working together to create some economies of scale. They are close to each other, they have shade, they have seating, they have restrooms, they might have a band shell, they might have, you know, a bar or restaurant nearby that also works together with them. So we looked to Benita Springs to, because they had a good, thank you, Benita Springs for writing a good code on mobile food courts. Generally, a mobile food court as proposed in your code would require a vending space. You might think of a vending space as a place where you might regularly dock or park a food truck in order to operate. So that vending space is a designated location with the utility connections for every mobile food vending vehicle or mobile food vendor that would be permitted to operate there. And that would be shown on a site plan, and we would review that, DCD or DSD would review that site plan and look for all site improvements, curb, gutter, sidewalk. It would need to provide bathrooms, it would need to provide required parking. If there are accessory uses, there would be required parking for those accessory uses. And that would allow for some, whether it be the city or whether it be a private provider or a private developer to propose one of these mobile food courts. Five of the 13 codes are identical or were adapted from Benita Springs. On the topic of enforcement, if a mobile food vendor violated the codes and they're located on city property, including a right-of-way, we understand that the police could warn or ticket. And if a violator, a mobile food vendor violates the code, is located on private property, then we would work with code enforcement, which could issue citations or notices of violation to that mobile food vendor, to the property owner or both. Staff is recommending adoption of the present ordinance, and it's, excuse me, we're recommending that you give us the green light to proceed with taking this back to planning and zoning or give us more input. We might want to talk about including that language from the last ordinance we just talked about, about a daily fine. That may or may not escalate. Otherwise, I would happily stand by for any questions, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you. I'll open up the floor. Councilmember Tate.
Thank you. Thank you, Patrick. This is exactly what I was hoping for. I know I've been pushing city attorney, and they've been working diligently with your staff to do this, and I think especially in the downtown area, there is no better time than to enforce this as soon as possible. It is truly getting out of hand in the downtown. And I think that the only thing I would add would be the fine. If after 90 days, the food truck doesn't begin to comply, but doing what Lee County is doing mirrors that, so no one can say they crossed over the bridge and the rules were different. And food courts, again, since they're new to this city, and we're doing something that's working in Benita Springs, I'm very happy with it and and truly ready to support this. Does this have to go anywhere else? Does it go to P and Z or does it? It does go to P and Z, and how quickly will that happen? If this council chooses to move it forward?
I suppose we could get it there pretty quickly.
Pretty quickly?
So that assumes that that'll happen sometime between now and perhaps middle of October. So this could be ready. Set the public hearing, and then we have the public have the public hearing. It might be November realistically.
Don't even think about giving me another one.
I think it's, a lot of it is going to depend on.
I want it. November 16th, please, it has to be done prior to that. Thank you very much.
Yeah, I don't want another one.
I'm about to be volatile.
Bear in mind, some of this depends on, is there going to be any desire on the part of council for any changes?
Right, right.
If there's no changes, then we, which maybe I shouldn't even tempt fate by saying that, but if there are no changes, then the, we could probably get it to.
The next P and Z?
I think we could get it to P and Z in October.
What's October? Who?
First week of October? What? P and Z.
Standby.
Well, I think there's a 10-day advertising requirement before we would take it to P and Z. So if we can get it to the October P and Z and all goes well there, then it would just be a matter of scheduling it for intro and for public hearing in front of the council.
So it could.
Two public hearings in front of the council.
So it could go to P and Z, perhaps October 5th. We set the public hearing on the 12th, and then the public hearing on the 26th?
We need two public hearings for this matter.
All right, so first public hear, so we have to set the public hearing on the 12th, first public hearing on the 26th, second public hearing on November 2nd.
Potentially, yes.
That could be the timeline.
It could be the timeline, yes.
Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you, Mayor. I am also very pleased with this. I am grateful that, Patrick, you and staff definitely took recommendations. I know I wasn't at the last COW meeting, I think I was in the hospital with COVID, but when we talked about this, but I was very concerned and I was very, also very hopeful that we would be looking at what Benita Springs was doing because I really think they got it right. And I've been watching that council come up with some really innovative ideas to sort of bring events and 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 things, community, community events that their community could enjoy. So I'm grateful that we did that. I'm also, like councilmember Tate, grateful that we are consistent with Lee County because I do agree, shouldn't be one set of rules over the bridge than the other. I think it keeps it consistent. So I will support this as well and recommend that we move forward. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, and I also support an ordinance that involves the mobile food vendors and a food court. Question that I have, I guess is more so on the land development side, and maybe either yourself and Mr. Cetera could mention or explain this to us so we have a good understanding, is with mobile food courts, will that be a special special use? Or is, where would these particular locations be located within the city? If it is a special use, is that something that the department director approves? Does it come back to council? Those sorts of questions pertaining to the food court.
Food court, Vince Cetera for the record.
Hang on, I'll take a stab at that. So, Mr. Mayor, in looking at the use table that's proposed in the draft ordinance that I'm viewing, it's showing that it is a conditional use in non-residential districts, mixed-use districts, and in the South Cape. And my understanding is that conditional uses may be approved administratively by the Director of Development Services, unless Mr. Cetero disagrees with me on that.
Yeah, that that's correct. It's an administrative process. Those, on the special event side, the special event permit would go through Parks and Recreation, but it's handled separately because it would be for that event, which we've had in the past where food establishments, food carts, and food trucks have been allowed. So that part would continue, and it's been ongoing. This would be something different if something, if someone wanted an establishment of a permanent nature.
Okay. And the only reason I brought that up, I didn't know how much control council wanted with the food courts. As far as, you know, I know in our land development code, and that's why I brought it up, if it's a special use, the department director has the authorization for approval, and I just wanted to bring that to everybody's attention. But I would support the ordinance that was presented. The only thing that I would add is very similar to what staff had mentioned we did in the previous discussion, where if there is a violation, maybe that violation is on a daily basis to get, to give it some teeth. So when we're out there enforcing a violation, there are some repercussions that occur on a daily basis. So I think that's extremely important to make sure we adopt that into the into the ordinance. So for me, that's, that's what my preference would be. Councilmember Cosden.
Thank you, Mayor. So I think I might be the odd one out. I have, I have a problem with this ordinance, the way, the way it's written. I don't think, I thought that at the last time we discussed this, we talked about allowing a certain amount of time to pass before they move the vehicle, but this one has every day, right? So I think that's going to be a problem. And while I understand this for trucks that are in the right-of-way or in city lots, things like that, I'm going to give an example of one that I saw yesterday at a gas station. It's been there forever, it's parked in the corner, it's not blocking anything, and I think it would probably be difficult for that person to move it every single day. And then the next question is, where would they put it? Because our commercial vehicle ordinance prevents them from parking it in their driveway. So now we're going to be creating a whole problem for, I don't even know how many businesses, probably dozens, to have to figure out storage. I think philosophically, as a government, why is it our business, what a business owner is allowing on their own property overnight? Why is that our business? I don't think it's, should be in our purview. And I understand applying this to public areas, absolutely. I think it'll do a lot more harm than good if you look at how we're hurting the business owners versus what good does it do to take a food truck off of a business property, a private property? Thank you.
Councilmember Welsh.
Yeah, I've got a couple of questions, let's put it that way. I'm a business owner, I own a salon. Say I want to allow someone to park on my property, and they want to pay rent to park in my parking space. Being a commercial business, I'm allowed to do that, correct? I can allow anyone to park. If it's a food truck, it's a food truck. You know, where, what if it's a ladder racked truck for an electrician? And I want them to park overnight because they can't park at their house. So would I be allowed to have a food truck park overnight in my property on a commercial property? Is my question for this, does that, is that allowed?
Unless Mike or Vince or our city attorney disagree, yes, you could allow the overnight parking of a commercial vehicle on a commercial property.
Okay, so a food truck is non-operational.
Miss Tate is shaking her head no. Am I mistaken? I must be.
Well, it's a food truck, and we just stated in the ordinance that it's.
It's mobile.
It's mobile.
But it's not, it's not operating. He's talking about parking versus operating.
Yeah, that's too different.
Oh, so you're parking, then you're not operating? Okay.
But I think we addressed that the first time. I'm sorry to interrupt.
We did.
I think we addressed that in the first COW meeting where we said, is this going to be truly mobile? Because like, I think the example we used was the Home Depot. Sorry, sorry.
Councilmember Welsh has the floor.
I'm sorry, I just.
So my question is, parking of commercial vehicles on commercial spaces is allowed?
Is allowed.
So in essence, a mobile food truck is a commercial vehicle. And if I own a commercial piece of property, I could allow it to park on my property overnight.
Okay. Vince Cetero again. The intent of the ordinance, based on the last workshop that we had with the council, is to make a separate category for these types of uses. If they are truly mobile, they would have to move in the time period you dictate, which is spelled out in the ordinance. Commercial parking is a separate issue with a truck or a commercial vehicle. A vehicle that dispenses food is being treated differently in this ordinance, which means they would have to move. And we've come full circle. This is the argument we've had since 2013.
Yeah.
And various iterations of this ordinance.
Could they just close and move to a different part of the, of the property?
No.
That night?
No.
And then open the next day?
No.
Could they just move right next door and park that night?
No, they would have to move to a place that, where it's acceptable. And the example you gave, we would have to have proof that it's an acceptable place to park. The best place to park would be in an industrial commercial yard that accepts these kinds of facilities, or when they go to commissary and do that. That's, that was the whole purpose of the ordinance in matching it to Lee County. They have to be mobile.
Yeah. So they have to be mobile, they have to move it.
In the period of time.
Now you're saying they have to go to a commissary or to an industrial parking lot?
They have to go to the commissary because of state rules in order to clean their facility out. They have to do that. And if they don't have to go to commissary, if they have self-cleaning facilities or self-discharge and all that, that, that's, they would handle that on their own. We're not in that enforcement side of the house. As far as, I'm making a suggestion that if they aren't going to be able to park on the lot overnight, or for a certain period of days, they would have to move, whatever you dictate in the final ordinance, they would have to go to a place that is acceptable, where it's allowable, and that was the first thought that came into my head. They would have to go into.
Yeah.
A parking area that would allow them to congregate.
Which could be a different commercial parking lot if they had permission from the owner.
It could be, yes.
But that, so it's leaving when they're done vending, they can go somewhere else and then come back that next day.
The, yes, if it's next.
Or stay at that second location and open up the next day.
Yeah, whatever the period is, if they have to move every third day or four days, they would come back the next day. And again, it's for the truly mobile, and what the ordinance doesn't do, it doesn't recognize, like the previous ordinances did that we brought forward to the council, is establish the permanent food establishment. And there's about 18 or 19 of them in the, in the city. Some are mobile, some are not. Some have wheels on them, some don't, just to make it the difference there for the discussion purposes. When the ordinance is adopted, in the period of time that you dictate, and councilmember Cosden pointed to that just a minute ago, there would be a timeframe, and the ordinance, I think, has a 90 days. There's another way to attack that, you can say the ordinance becomes effective for a certain amount of days afterwards. Because you may remember at one of the past workshops, I mentioned to the council that when and if you adopt this, we will have to work with the business owners on those properties that don't move, whether or not they have wheels or not, and they can move it, and tell them what's coming so that they can prepare. Some will have to move for a short period of time and then come back if they're truly mobile. Others won't be able to stay because there are some that have really become permanent, even if they have wheels. So we proposed that those would be allowable in past ordinances, even with this council. The council stated, no, we don't want that. We want you to model it after Lee County, which is what we've done, and they would not be able to stay.
Okay. So I do share the same sentiment with councilmember, member Cosden, that if, if this is my, my business, why can't I park it at my house? So I do want to look at parking of trailers of a certain size in your driveways later down the road. I know I'm not going to get any, anyone to hit on this until after November. But I do think that maybe we can look into something for overnight parking of utility trailers or work trailers in, in our driveways later on down the line. I know that's not this conversation, but it's one that I want to have as far as trailers and boats and where they can park. For the sake of moving this forward to the next process, which includes public input, I don't, I'm not going to go against this. I think we have more time for discussion about as far as how many days, if it's every third day, every, every day. This is a good place to start, and I'm, I'm not going to keep it from going forward because like we said, it's been since 2013. Thank you.
Councilmember Shepherd.
I'm, I'm for the new ordinance. But one thing I wanted to mention, in one of the pictures that was shown, it showed a temporary fence put up, and it showed a shade structure. So just for my fellow councilmembers to understand, a restaurant in our city would have to hire an engineer, would have to have that structure approved by the city and installed properly so it's safe. And here we are, that, that picture looks to me like it's on Del Prado. So that temporary shade structure, if Augusta wind got under it and threw it out in the street, it could literally cause a major car accident and kill people. You know, things like that happen. But my question is to staff, is how is that shade structure, has nothing to do with the the food establishment? How is that commercial property allowed to put up that fence and that sage, shade structure without a permit?
Well, in that particular one, that's at the BP station, I believe, near the mall, Coralwood Mall. The whole thing's in violation, like every, everyone in the city is.
So how come it's never been removed? How come we?
Sir?
How come it's never been removed? How come it's never been removed? How come it's allowed to be there?
We never asked them to move it because the entire thing's in violation. We left the, all of these open until the council decided under mobile food vendor ordinance. All of this has been held in abeyance pending an action. And that was the direction we went back in 2013.
Yeah, but no, what I'm saying is I'm excluding the, the mobile food.
Right.
Trailer or truck or whatever it is. I'm just talking about the temporary fence at that gas station and the shade structure.
That's treated, I'm sorry.
There's existing regulations, right? You have to have a permit. You have to have engineer drawings.
Right, we treated it, we treated it as a package. You wouldn't have to have an engineer drawing for, for what they have there. We would just ask for a site plan. But we treated the whole thing as a package. The whole, the use is illegal to begin with, so all of these accessory uses go with it. And, and the decision was made back some years ago that we weren't going to issue zoning approvals to any of these facilities or issued them permits until the council made a decision on the primary use. And the primary use is the mobile vendor.
Okay, thank you. And then I just wanted to say one more thing to my fellow council members that are concerned about them having to move daily. I see a lot of these trucks and trailers that never move. And when you look at them, their tires are flat. So in an emergency, they're not mobile. And I think what this ordinance does is make sure that they are, are always mobile and have the ability to move. So by making them move daily, we know it's possible to move them. But when they sit for months without moving, who knows if it's going to start? Who knows if the wheels have air? You know, who knows if it's mechanically operatable to even move? So that's why I'm for this new ordinance. I think it guarantees that the vehicle can be moved. Thank you.
Madam City Attorney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My light has been on since the discussion regarding whether the food courts were CUs. And they are CUs, as the city manager has already indicated, they are conditional uses. To give council its sense of confidence, however, when you have a CU use, the conditions that your business is going to be allowed to operate under are in the, it's in the code, so it's in the ordinance. It's the regulations that you see there that a, that a food court would be subject to, all those regulations would be the conditions that are imposed on the conditional use. It's not like a willy-nilly, handpicked kind of thing for that. You start getting into a special exception. But you, you are seeing in this draft ordinance, the currently proposed regulations regarding CUs for food courts. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Long?
Mayor, yeah, first, just want to say that I support this in principle. I think it's time to get this thing moving forward. I did want to, for my clarification purposes, to Councilmember Cosin's point, the, with reference to us sort of controlling what property owners do on their private property and allowing or not allowing, or what they're able to allow to occur, I think in that instance where you have an individual at like a gas station or private commercial lot that's been there for some time, this is, they're allowed to continue that use, but it, if I'm correct, but it allows, but it requires them to go through like an SDP or something like that? Or did we remove that? I know that that was part of the original discussion.
That's gone.
Okay.
So they could still have their food truck, any one of the different cities' food trucks come there every day and operate. What they couldn't do was have them sit there indefinitely. And they also wouldn't be allowed to deploy their seats, their tarps, their tents, their umbrellas, their fences, et cetera.
Okay, I remember that being part of the original discussion. I just want to make sure that I was on the same page. So she's correct in her assumption that they would be basically, it's all encompassing. They have to move them all every day regardless of the site. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Tate.
Just one final thought. If you go to the last picture, it does create quite a bit of blight in our city as well with the way some of these are. Patrick, if you can put the last picture in your presentation up. And remember that there are businesses that are paying a fortune to landlords and improvements, as Councilmember Shepherd said, to operate a restaurant. And then these people are coming in and paying penance and operating a restaurant with none of the expenses that a regular business is. And, and it's hurting a lot of our restaurants that we are not able to adopt this ordinance and move it forward. So I would encourage everybody to support it if possible. Thank you.
Councilmember Nelson.
Vince said everything I was going to say regarding history. Thank you.
Councilmember Hayden.
I support it as well. I did have a couple of questions, though. You said 11 of 17 for Lee County, 5 of 13 for Benita and the food courts. What, what were the other, are the, are the six for, that were not similar to Lee County or the eight that were not similar with Benita for the food courts? Are those things that are unique to our city? I was just curious why it didn't match up 17 to 17 or 13 to 13, what, what the reasoning was there?
I'd be glad to load a document that shows those that are different versus those that are basically our language versus inspired from someone else's.
I don't know. If you, if you just want to highlight it, you don't need to go over. I was just curious if those were things that we thought weren't, didn't, weren't really work for Cape Coral as they would for Lee County or things that we thought needed to be more stringent in ours that may not have been in Lee County's.
Little column A, little column B, notably on screen before you, are five codes that were not adapted from Lee County, but that, that appear in ours. The first one basically states that, that the mobile food vendor has to have the written permission of the property owner. Code C8 states that they cannot block pedestrian or vehicular traffic entering, exiting, or maneuvering. C9, that they must be located on an impervious surface and they can't project beyond that. C10, that they may not vend from a required off-street parking space that is required by the principal business use, including a handicap spot. And C17, one that's been in, in our code since the beginning, is regarding the compliance with the Florida Fire Prevention Code at the request of our fire department. The mobile food courts, we had a number of additional requirements that were generated from city staff and the attorney's office. C1, notably, Benita Springs requires a special exception for their mobile food courts, so we couldn't adapt all of theirs. We did state that they must have a site plan in C1. And C4, we defined temporarily what a vending space or the parking space is for one of these vehicles. In C6, we said that these mobile food courts need to meet setback requirements based on what zoning district they're on. So that means the truck and any accessory structure needs to meet the setback requirements. And C7, we state that even if you're in a mobile food court, your mobile food vending vehicle needs to stay mobile, needs to have the ability to be moved, so you can't strip it of tires, et cetera. And C9, we state, basically this is a reaffirmation that a mobile food court is a non-residential development. So it requires all site improvements that a developer of a gas station or a new retail store would, would need, including waste collection, curb gutter sidewalk, roadway improvements, landscaping, et cetera. In C11, we note that they need to have a business tax receipt, that a mobile food vendor still needs to have a tax receipt even if they're located in a mobile food court. And C12, maybe redundant, but we state that it has, that it has to stay compliant with our health and sanitation codes and a similar fire prevention code requirement in C13. So I hope that answers your question.
Yeah. And because the food courts are a little more permanent in the event of a storm and there's an evacuation, or will these four food courts be required to dismantle and move? Should there, should there be a disaster of any kind that, that, is there ever going to be a case where they need to be mobile? I know they have to have wheels and, and have that, but in the event where they do need to move, you know, are we going to require that food court to be dismantled in the case of a storm?
Well, I mean, they were.
Or they, will they be looked at as any other structure that, you know, we hope you're up to code and?
Well, any, any structure that's built at the food court would be up to code. And as to whether or not the city has declared a mandatory evacuation, these are vehicles, so I would envision that they would have to be safely evacuated, the mobile food vendors themselves, and then hopefully get back to town as quick as possible. But yeah, as far as any mobile food court structure, I don't envision that anything there would be disassembled in the event of, you know, I'm talking like a shade structure or something, you know, because those are built with a building permit, meet wind loads, et cetera.
Okay, all right. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you, sir.
Councilmember Long?
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to clarify here. I know we had the discussion last time as well, it was under a different context, but I see you got the use chart here and without me trying to navigate it, I thought you might have a simple answer. We see a lot now that, that some of these food trucks gather, one or two, at the request of individual multifamily housing units, gated community type things. Would that be permitted under this, this proposed ordinance here? I mean, it's at the, at the invitation of those individual?
Short answer is yes. We have a provision that allows them to do that by accepting them for these private events. So if a homeowners association or something were to ask, invite one to cruise their neighborhood on a Friday, then it would be okay.
Now, when you say private event, you're not referring to one that you'd require a permit for from the city?
I'm not.
Temporary event permit or something like that?
No, not a permitted special event or something.
Sure, okay, I wanted to make sure that didn't get lost in the shuffle. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, one, one last thing I wanted to mention was just that, and you, you had just stated it, I think in the context of the presentation, you had mentioned special event. And I didn't know if we wanted to make sure we characterize a special event permit, you know, because to me, there could be a different definition of special event for many people. I think in the context of your presentation, you were talking about special events throughout the city, whether it be Bike Night or, or some other types of events. Are you talking about a special event by permit?
The exemptions section of the present code exempts mobile food vendors that are vending or otherwise conducting business as part of a permitted special event approved by the Parks and Recs Department in accordance with LDC citation. So any mobile food vendor operating in that context, our Parks and Recreation Department and Police Department, they, they will handle the location of that. The second exemption specifically reads that the mobile food vendor vending or otherwise conducting business on private property for a private party or private event for a duration less than one day, not open to the general public. Those are also going to be exempted. That's going to handle Mr. Long's neighborhood food truck, I believe, as well as a food truck or a number of food trucks that would be at a private church party or something like that. And the last one is about the state of emergency, what does being exempt.
Okay, thank you. Anything that I think that, it sounds like here is a majority consensus to move this forward, I think that would probably help staff, as I heard one or two people mention, have a daily penalty if they don't comply. I think we need to get that consensus, if that's something that we want to incorporate in this particular ordinance, similar to the earlier discussion that we had. So is that something that this body has a desire so we can give staff the, the necessary direction that they need? So for, for me, I agree.
I do.
Right. And then the second question, we, I guess we want to keep that 90 days, that Councilmember Hayden, I, I think that's ample amount of time. Mr. City Manager, you get the direction that you need?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I just want to point out a slight revision to the timeline that I discussed a moment ago. The city attorney advised me that we need to have a minimum of 10 days between the public hearing. So what we're looking at right now, today's the 14th of September, we will probably set the public hearing so that it'll appear on your agenda as soon as the 21st. Then it would go to P and Z on the 5th, with the first public hearing looks like it'd be the 12th, and then we'll have enough time to do the second public hearing on October 26th.
Okay.
Now, we generally try to avoid introducing things before P and Z because then if P and Z makes recommendations that council might want to incorporate, they may go beyond the scope of that ordinance. And so we just want to make you aware of that.
I'm okay with moving the particular ordinance forward in the fashion that was mentioned. Councilmember Welsh?
Yeah, I know we're, we're trying to get this done before gloriously, but I think rushing it.
Don't do it this.
No, I'm, I'm saying though, I would, I would rather it go before P and Z before it's introduced as, and just put it forward as a normal ordinance, because I don't think that, you know, we're giving them 90 days after this anyways. So I think the word's going to get out there, the people are going to start moving them, and we're working on it, so I don't think.
You're on that side of the aisle.
Right. I.
Yeah, so I would prefer not to put it before, I, I would rather it go before P and Z before it's introduced, because that'll give more time for public input, and that's what's really important here.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think that for me personally, we can, we can move forward in this process that Mr. City Manager had outlined, because it does give, and I do agree with you, that public input is extremely important, not only with this ordinance, but any other ordinance change that may, that may be coming forward. And with the timeframe that the city manager outlined, there is ample opportunity on many different meetings, whether it's P and Z or first or second meeting that we will have as a city council. So that's why I would support, because I do believe there, there will be at least three opportunities available to the public to make a comment or to engage in the conversation until we make a, a decision and a vote. And if P and Z does come back with some modifications, you know, then at that time, if we feel that, hey, we want to slow the process down, we still have that opportunity as well. So that's where I'm at on that. Councilmember Long?
Yeah, I would agree with that, that system of progression as well. I think, having been on P and Z myself, I can attest that, that, that that's not a necessary evil in this particular instance, because, for example, if there was some public opinion, they would have had an opportunity here. They'll have several more opportunities that are publicly noticed if we have those on the hearing agendas. So I wouldn't be opposed to, to moving this forward in that fashion.
Is everyone else okay with that? So we got a no from Councilmember Cosin, a yes from Councilmember Hayden, a yes from Shepherd, a yes for myself.
Yes, for me.
A no from Councilmember Welsh, a yes, and a yes. So I think that's the majority. I give you the direction you need, Mr. City Manager.
It does, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we will move on to the next discussion, which is item 4B4, Contractors and Construction Regulation. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I think I'm going to be joined at the podium by Mr. Cotero and his staff. The reason this is before you is because in a previous, a recent legislative session, the state legislature adopted House Bill 735. And what this House bill, which was also approved by the governor, what it does is essentially it preempts all occupational licensing to the state. So as you know, right now, the city issues certain licenses, I guess they're, they're known as certificates of competency, for certain contractors that are working within the city limits. So with the legislature's action, they have now precluded local government from licensing any contractors within their jurisdiction. And that is going to become effective July 1st, 2023. It's come to my attention that Lee County has, in order to comply with the, the new state statute, they are in the process of phasing out their local contracting regulation, regulations. And so we felt that it was appropriate to bring this item for you for a conversation. And our recommendation, as Mr. Cotero and his staff will get to in a second, is that we mirror Lee County's efforts and essentially phase out the city's involvement in any type of contractor regulation, and also to include unlicensed contractor enforcement, because the state has basically said that they are going to take on that responsibility on behalf of local government. So I'll turn it over to Mr. Cotero's staff at the moment, and they'll, they'll give you more of the, the details associated with this.
Thank you. Vince Cotero, Development Services Director, again. Mr. Hernandez said it very well, not much more to add. Todd Hogland, our Code Compliance Manager, is going to go through the presentation. But we wanted to basically let you. we wanted to basically let you know that what the state has done in essence is put some contractor or subcontractor, the old terminology, they're all contractors, work into various categories in prior bills that they've adopted, and some are not. We believe that you may see this continue over the next few years. So what we'd like to do is talk to you about getting out in front on it now, having our rules and regulations coincide with the deadlines. Lee County has done that. We've done an extensive amount of research on what they've done, and we've talked to some of their staff members as well. And we'd like to talk to you about a phase out of this to streamline the process. So with that, Todd's going to go through some slides for you, and we can answer any questions that you have.
Morning, Mayor and Council. Todd Hogland, Co-Compliance Manager. Again, just to summarize what we're discussing here this morning, the legislature adopted House Bill 735 and preempting all occupational licensing to the state. Any local licensing that we have in place now will timeout as of July 1st, 2023. Again, we're trying to give additional time for our contractors to figure out the avenues that they want to explore as far as continuing their license and continuing to be able to do work here within the city of Cape Coral. And that would need to have some adjustments or revisions made to the Code of Ordinance Chapter 6 under Contractors and Construction Regulation Board. Background, City Manager summarized, but again, there are certificates of competency for major contracting activities that are licensed by the state of Florida. For almost 50 years, the city of Cape Coral have had local specialty contractors. Again, contractors wishing to do work within the city limits would not necessarily have to have a state license, they could be licensed locally. Again, the state is removing that ability, and as of July 1st, we will have to make a decision on which direction we would like to go. Over the next eight months, if, if we agree to a timeline of July 1st of 2023, the contractors will have to decide which category or which state license that they will have to obtain and go through the process of applying through DBPR for the state. We are in a renewal process right now in September. Licenses currently expire for the year on October 1st. We are letting contractors know that it will not be a full year of their license, it will, that again, licenses will expire on July 1 of 2023, and again, allowing them additional time to make plans, to allow to continue operation. To obtain a local license, you would go before the local construction regulation board. If there are no more local licenses that are being issued or applied for or reviewed, there would no longer need be the, not necessarily have a construction licensing board, so we would also ask that that also be phased out as part of Chapter 6 of the city Code of Ordinances. Again, we're seeking guidance from council to make the amendments to the current code to be in compliance with the new law that's being adopted, that was adopted under House Bill 735. Again, Lee County has also gone through the process, and again, we were speaking earlier with the mobile food vendors about trying to be consistent on both sides of the bridge. Again, city staff is recommending that we kind of follow the same pathway, and again, coincide with what Lee County has done with their licensing board and their phase out of the licensing, contractor licensing. I stand by for any questions.
Councilmember Hayden?
This is like one of those no choice things. My, I guess my biggest concern here is I don't have a whole lot of confidence in the state enforcing this in all these different areas. I don't believe they're going to be equipped to do that. We hear time and time again about unlicensed contractors working our area and the siege of that, and what, what the pressures that puts on the building industry from the licensed contractors, upset, concerned about what's happening. What's, what's the mechanism in place if we're aware, if local municipalities are aware of unlicensed contractors working in area? Can we, are our hands completely tight? Can we notify the state that we have documentation that these unlicensed contractors are, are working in the area? Or we're just at the mercy of the state and how they're going to enforce this? Or have they come up with an enforcement plan on how this is going to...
That's a very good question. If I recall, the issue that we're addressing is the, the licensing itself. We would continue to have, I do not believe we're speaking of repealing anything as far as the enforcement provisions, so our, our code officers can still continue to investigate that, whether it's locally or if there, it rises to the criminal level, that we can also continue to do anything as far as investigation, either through Code Board or through the, the state attorney's office. So we would, we, again, we will continue to do that.
We could still do that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, alright, thanks, Mayor.
Mr. City Manager?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I just want to point out, though, that our efforts in unlicensed contractor enforcement are going to be supplementary to the state. The state has made it clear that they feel that they are better equipped to handle this type of public policy issue rather than government that's closest to the people. And so therefore, if that's the case, if this is something that they want to do, then I think it's up to them to adequately resource the Department of Professional Regulation to make sure that they have enough enforcement personnel on staff to investigate complaints of unlicensed activity. So, I, I, what I don't want to do here is, on one hand, they are removing your ability to regulate them, but then on the other hand, they're expecting you to do the work on their behalf. And so again, I think we will be available to supplement the state's efforts, however, I think the, the primary mode of enforcement needs to be DPR. And so, you know, what we would do is we would continue to refer people to the Department of Professional Regulation.
Which I guess gets me back to my other question, have they outlined any sort of enforcement plan to municipalities that gives us confidence that, that this will be regulated?
I have not seen anything either from the state nor the Florida League of Cities, Florida City County Managers Association, that leads me to believe that they have developed an enforcement plan.
Can we reach out and ask them if they're, if they're developing any sign of a timeline that will at least give us an idea of when we might be able to see something?
We can.
Thanks.
Yeah, my question, Todd, very similar. I think when you look, was, what was the House bill number again?
735.
735.
735. First of all, if you could get me a copy of that House bill?
It should be in your back.
A backup material?
I believe we added it. Um, hold on, let me just, yes, we did.
Okay. Now, the, the bill then, because my understanding, that particular bill basically was only for the licensing component.
That's correct.
And there's nothing mentioned there, as I'm reviewing it now, as far as the enforcement component. Is that correct?
That's, that's correct.
So my position is, you know, I understand that maybe you want to say, well, if you're taking the, the licensing component out of it, then heck, take it all. To me, I don't believe that's the right approach, for me personally. I think we still have an obligation for our community to make sure that they are licensed contractors working within our community. So just because they've taken the licensing component basically out of our hands and it's mandated by state regulations, you know, it's very similar to a driver's license. It's issued by the state, does that mean we're not going to enforce it? Police officer pulls you over, you don't have a driver's license, are you going to say, ah, that's handled by the state? We're not, we're not going to enforce this. To me, that's ridiculous. And I think that same approach with licensed contractors here in our city should continue as it has been in the past. My understanding, you had two, was it two code officers that basically worked the licensing component?
Yes.
And we have that today, correct?
Yes, sir.
For me, I think that, that approach should continue, because for me, the licensing component is one aspect of it. The enforcement of making sure that we have licensed contractors working in our city is another component, and I don't think you give one up just because the other one was taken from us. So I still believe that we continue in the same fashion that we have, where we have two dedicated code officers for, to make sure that they are licensed contractors. The reason we're doing that is we're protecting the residents of the community. That's why we're doing that. We're not doing it because we want to make sure that the contractor's license to do business, it's more for me, protecting the, the residents of our community. And I don't believe that just because the state says, hey, we're going to be the ones issuing the license, that we do, still do not do an enforcement effort like we have in the past. So that, that's my preference on a policy within our city. I think that we should still continue to do the enforcement component to make sure we're protecting our residents. Any other comments?
Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I think I agree with you. I know we heard in the past year or so, so many of our construction folks coming forward, being frustrated with this. So I, I think if there's a way that we can enforce it locally, I would recommend that we continue to do that, in addition to having the state, the state bill, because I think obviously that backs us up. But, but if there is a way that we can consistently have, I know there's always an issue with enforcement, but if there's a way we can consistently continue that, I would agree with you. Thank you, Mayor.
Any other comments on this topic? Give you the direction you're looking for, Mr. City Manager?
Alright. Thank you very much, Todd, for the presentation. I think it's 11 o'clock, take a 10-minute break at this point, and then we'll pick up at the quarterly Parks Go Bond update.
We're actually being a lot better than I expected.
Okay, alright, we'll take a 10-minute break and be back at 11:11.
Because she had given me a breakdown. So I, I just wanted to make sure everyone understands there's still work to be done in the coming year, if I'm correct. And, and she did give me a list, so I kind of have an idea. I think what Ms. Barron was telling me was where it said completed, maybe it was shade structures and things like that. But we still have a great deal of work, like at the BMX park and all of that. Is that correct, Mr. City Manager?
Correct. We had identified early on as part of the parks geo bond that there were going to be specific improvements at certain facilities that were going to be funded through the bond proceeds. That's not to say that there are no other improvements that are going to be done at those facilities, because we all know that they have, they're showing a lot of deferred maintenance. That's going to be accomplished through a different funding source.
Okay. And finally, does the yacht club belong in here? Because I thought we sort of moved it out of the GO bond.
We, again, this is a general parks update. It's certainly, we can keep it separate, but it's always-
I just wanted to make sure that we understood that. Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, my understanding, the funding mechanism is what we changed, not necessarily the project itself. Council member, oh, that's you. Any other, any other discussions on this topic? Okay. Seeing none, we'll move on to the next item of the agenda. Thank you for the update, Mr. Klingon. Quarterly capital improvement update, item six.
So, Mr. Mayor, before we turn it over to a variety of staff members, I just want to say that Mr. Pearson had a family emergency and was not able to be here today. So we are going to give you the CIP and Public Works updates. You have the PowerPoint presentation in your background. If you have any questions, we are happy to address your questions offline, but staff is not going to be prepared to, to provide you that presentation today on the utility projects.
Thank you.
Mr. Ilchis, is, Ilchis or Paul's going first? Okay.
Thank you. Paul Klingon, Director of Capital Improvements. These, again, are the, the projects through capital improvements, primary of the utilities, extension projects, parks, GO bond, major city facilities. North Two is substantially complete. There's still some miscellaneous plumbers connections, so this is probably the last time I'll put this on the update. We can consider North Two complete. Like I said, there's still some, some minor plumbers connections to be done. North One UEP, the design's 100% complete. The first bid of the six contracts on the West is due at the end of September. Then the, the East comes later, and that design is about 75% complete. But what our plan is, is all the bids for the West, the six contracts, should be in by the first week of November. Then the plan is to come to a, the November 30th cow with all that information and the estimated assessments and everything UEP. North Three UEP, that is the next UEP we're going to do, and we are still in the process of getting a design firm on North Three. Keep in mind that North Three design will be concurrent with North One East completing design, and construction will be happening on the North One and North Three simultaneously to meet the schedule of 2025. GO bond, we already just talked about the details, as you can see from the list. We've, like I said before, we're into construction and are bidding on more than we are waiting on permits. The police training facility, if you recall, we had, came to council and we relocated that site. So Schenckel Schultz is approximately 60% complete, and we're hoping that we'll start construction shortly here, early '23. Same time, time schedule, little, little bit ahead on the fire train facility, where about 90% complete was Sweet Sparkman, but that same schedule in construction in 2023. Fire Station 12 is built. We have the ribbon cutting. Again, I'll take this off the slide. This will be the last time you'll see Fire Station 12. Fire Station 13, that's in process. We're about 60% complete on that design. So again, that will be constructing in 2023. New fleet facility. Weston Sampson got the study. The study is about 75% complete, and that study is going to make recommendations where the facility should be located, the size of the facility, how many bays, and all that. So we, we should have that wrapped up shortly for eventual presentation to council. Facilities master plan, we're negotiating with Stan Tech Consulting Services to take a look at all the needs we have in the facilities as far as expanding and where everybody's going to be sitting now and in the future. The bridge rehab program. Volcare is 75% complete with their bridge rehab or replacement inspection and prioritization. Inspection is complete. So that's something, when we get that back, we'll certainly be updating council on what our plan is for bridge rehab and replacement over the next many years. Same timetable with the 28 wears and the stormwater system. D and D boat ramp, we're still stalled at 60% complete, waiting for that interlocal agreement with Lee County. So that's, that's something that we haven't progressed with that design, waiting for the decision with Lee County. And JC Park, we've been working with Panini, finalizing negotiations, negotiations, sorry, for the concept and eventually the design. So we're starting with the concepts to, to bring back to council, and I don't believe the construction of that was in the budget, but, but we'll be working on that next year. The, the concepts and the design. Any questions?
Councilmember Tate.
If you go back to North One, Two, and Three, when do you anticipate, especially North One, West, and East, that those assessments will go on the tax rolls?
For North One West, the assessments will go on the tax rolls. I'll ask Mark Mason.
2024.
2024.
Okay. And then North One East will be 2025?
Yeah.
Okay. And not that it is a major project, because we put $100,000 in, but the freshwater boat ramps, is that something that we get a timeline?
I believe, I believe Mike will be giving that update. That's a Public Works project.
Oh, okay. Okay.
And that's an FY '23 project?
Right.
So you'll start seeing that in FY '23 as we report it to you on a quarterly basis.
Okay, yeah, and I know we were, hadn't finished it yet. And just for my, I guess for the public's information, when we're building fire stations, what is the, like, how many residents, how many square miles for every fire station that we build?
Oh, I do not, I, we can get you that answer unless Rob has an idea.
I would just like to have that as, I don't know what the geographic area is, but I do get some questions from residents on that.
Yeah, we'll get you that.
So I'd just like that soundbite, so I know what that is. Thank you.
Let me, let me just pull out a, put out a call for Chief Lamb. He might be just down the hall, and so hopefully he's hearing me.
Or you can just email it to me. I just, I have some residents asking that question as they see fire stations come online, and I don't know the exact language.
Okay.
Thank you.
Councilmember Law.
Thank you. You mentioned when you were discussing D and D that we were still stalled. Is there any way that you could elaborate? I know you said that that had something to do with the interlocal agreement with the county. Can you provide a little bit more specifics so that maybe?
Yes, I'll, I'll take a stab at that answer. So my understanding is, right now, it's, it boils down to a discussion between the city attorney's office and the county attorney's office. I got an update yesterday from the county manager's office, and they informed me that the county attorney's office has, in fact, reached out to the city attorney's office. I can't confirm that. But there's just the, a conversation about whether an inner, a standard off-the-shelf interlocal agreement is sufficient for this type of project, or there's a specific type of interlocal service boundary agreement also in the statute. And I know it looks like I'm, I'm playing games with words, but those are actual titles, and there, I think there's a legal significant, there's a significant legal difference between the two.
Sure.
And so my understanding is that we are waiting for the city attorney and the county attorney's office to kind of reconcile their views, but I'm not speaking for the city attorney.
Well, I'm unaware that they've reached, unless they've reached out in the last couple of days, I'm unaware that they've reached out to us. I mean, I know we have heard through the grapevine that they, and we had met with them. We met with them and staff. But yes, there, as I understand it, there had been a somewhat of a decision by the county not to move forward with the interlocal service boundary agreement, and it's our opinion that we need the interlo, interlocal service boundary agreement. But I will certainly find out if they've reached out to us lately.
Okay, please. Yeah, I just was, was curious. I wanted to-
Oh, yesterday?
No, that's when I got my update, was yesterday.
Sounds like it's a legal issue then, rather than like a difference of opinion between the county and ourselves on some sort of material component of the project.
I, I think right now it is, it's in the hands of the legal offices of both jurisdictions.
Okay. Yeah, I'd like to see some, some update as to the, the status of that with the legal, because I think that there's going to be other problems down the road that's going to further delay this. So if we could move that one, that part along to get towards those, that'd be great. But thank you for the clarification.
Yeah, it's, it's, the discussion is immaterial to the design and the completion of the project.
Okay, thank you.
It's downstream issue, yep.
Yeah, and for me, I know we've been having this roadblock for some time as far as the county attorney's office and the city attorney's office coming to an agreement. Have we entertained a possibility of trying to, you know, if there's a stalemate between the two offices, have we looked at a third-party attorney to give us a recommendation? Or are you going to provide a outline and bring that to council so we can decide if we want to move forward with either one of those agreements? Sitting here doing nothing and not being able to come to an agreement, that doesn't help anyone involved. So we need to, I, I need to know what is going to be the direction that we are going to take in order to try to come up with a resolution on this particular issue, because I know this, this project has been sitting in limbo. Myself and the city manager actually had a meeting several weeks ago with the county manager and Commissioner Ruane. This is one of the topics of discussions that we brought up. And there's many other variables that I think that we can discuss at a later, later time. But first and foremost, we, we are going to need to address this interlocal agreement. So what's your plan moving forward?
Well, I was hoping that meetings like the one you just described between yourself and the BOCC representatives might help break the issue down. We were hoping that there might, that might facilitate moving forward with an interlocal service boundary agreement. We don't ask for that lightly, but we also generally recommend not speaking about our legal issues in public. I'll be happy to come around and meet with each one of you individually and explain the situation to you, if you think that would help in any way. I mean, and then if you want to, if this council wants to take some different action, that would be up to you after you fully understand the, after you fully understand the issues. But as I said, when we had originally met with the city, I mean, the county staff and their attorney's office, we were under the impression that they had no problem with doing this, and then that they were directed not to proceed in this manner. So we were hoping that actually there had been perhaps more of an administrative breakthrough on the part of the county. And if, if there is some belief now that they have reached out, it would have been recently, because previously they were not. And when I go back to the office today, I will find out if anyone has heard from them lately. If not, I mean, we'll be happy to reach out to the county attorney's office again. As I said, I don't think at that point that it was a disagreement between our offices. So we heard that they were directed not to proceed, so we'll, we'll be happy to communicate with them. And as I said, if any of you want to talk about this, I'll be happy to talk to you about it at length and ad nauseam.
Okay, my understanding, there was two different types of an agreement. The county wanted to do one type of an agreement, and our attorney's office wanted to do another type of an agreement. My recommendation to move forward to try to get some resolution to this is maybe we can set up a meeting, Mr. City Manager, which of course we would incorporate or include our city attorney's office and maybe myself, Commissioner Ruane, the county manager, and their city attorney's office. Maybe all of us can sit down and have a discussion exactly what the opinion of the county and what the opinion of the city is, so we can find a resolution and move forward. And then at that point, you know, that's something that maybe I can bring back to council and update the council on, on those discussions. If, if everyone on council agrees, maybe that's a position that we take. Moving forward, we'll set up that meeting and, and then move forward to try to find a, a resolution. Being in a stalemate, that's not going to get anything accomplished. So that would be my recommendation. Mr. City Manager or Madam City Attorney, you have any problems with that approach?
I have no problem with it.
All right. So I would ask the, Mr. City Manager, if you could maybe reach out to the county manager and try to set up that meeting, and so we can, we can have that discussion. Any other discussion on D and D? All right. Thank you, Mr. Klingon. I think we're done with your, Madam City Attorney.
Brian Bartosz in my office just texted me and said he has not heard anything from the county. So we haven't heard anything from them lately.
Okay. We will, Mr. City Manager, reach out, and we will set up that meeting so we can try to continue to move forward on this particular project.
We will do that.
Thank you.
And before we turn it over to Mr. Ilchis, and I'd like to have, since the fire chief is in the room, so we can dispense of the item, if I can have the fire chief come to the podium. Sorry, come to the podium and address the question that was posed by Councilmember Tate with respect to the, the general thought process or criteria that we utilize in determining where and when to site a fire station.
Thank you for doing that. I appreciate it.
For the record, Ryan Lamb, Fire Chief. I'm going to pull up a map here. Nope, I guess I'm not. So the, the short answer is, there's a number of things that go into selecting where future fire stations go. Fire Station 12 was put in place to cover a geographical gap in that southwest, Midwest area of the city. Station 13 is being put in place due to continued growth as we cover all the way out to 41 on Pine Island Road, but also Station Two and Station Five have our highest call volumes currently in the city. So to be able to cover that area. Future fire stations, we worked with a number of consultants from Fitch and Associates, Dr. Granito, individual here locally, and even the municipal planning organization. When we look at traffic advisory zones to where we see future growth projections within the city. So we have future fire stations in addition to 13, 14, 15, and 16. We have land already set aside for those future stations. And it's not like they're on a dart at a map to decide where they go. There are some things, like Station 13, I would prefer it a little closer out to Del Prado, but the cost of land on Del Prado versus being about a quarter mile away, we got it for $87,000. So big difference, we still get the same effect. So I guess that's the short answer. We are, per ISO, the insurance services office, you have to have a fire station within five miles of every residence, which we do. And at this point, then we're looking at growth, not only just infill, but then vertical growth as we continue to build larger buildings as well.
Thank you. Very helpful information.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. So we'll, the next item, I believe, Mr. Ilchis, you'll be providing that presentation?
Yes, sir. For Public Works.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Mike Ilchis, Public Works Director. This is the third quarter capital improvement project update for Public Works. And we're going to go over these 12 items. This quarter, we added to the list some operational projects. Previously, we were just reporting on the capital improvement projects and capital project funds. This quarter, we're going to add some operating, and then moving forward, we'll continue to do that. And I think as we roll into fiscal year '23, we'll put some operation sparkle stuff on here as well as we roll into handling the sparkle. So the Sun Trail, the shared use non-motorized trail, and as we go through this, the, the components that are underlined are the, the new items from the last quarter. So at this point now, Phase One is 85% complete, and we are still working on getting the agreement finalized for the Phase Three, which is the furthest portion between Del Prado and 24th. This is some imagery of a, of the pedestrian and non-motorized vehicle crossing over a bridge. And then on the right-hand side, you can see we had, actually had one of our residents and their children set up a lemonade stand in there. So that was a pretty interesting picture. We, we thought, look at that right away, it's being, being utilized.
And we considered her a temporary mobile food vendor.
And here's some, some further examples of how, how we're redoing the front of people's properties to include the driveway and their side-standing parking, and then just along the road, because of this, now we're adding curb and gutter. So that's just kind of an, an image of what, what it looks like now moving down the road.
Before Mike talks about the road paving program, I want to share some concerns that, that I have with regard to the Sun Trail program. And I know I've discussed this before with staff, and not exactly sure we, we have an answer to this yet, but I think it's going to be an issue for us going forward. Number one is, if you see the photograph there, one thing that you notice about the Sun Trail is, I, I believe it's a 12-foot wide-
Yes.
-trail, which is a little wider than the standard multipurpose trail, which is usually 10 feet. The state insisted that it be a 12-foot wide, wide lane, which is the, the width of a standard travel lane. So I'm concerned about that. I'm concerned, when you look at the photograph, there's absolutely zero shade. And when you travel, and recently I was in Orlando with staff, and we were at, at Lake Nona, and we're, we're being escorted in a tour, and they were pointing out how pri, how proud they were with the quality of their trails, and they utilized extensive landscaping to shade the, the users of the trail. I, I'm just concerned here that, you know, in, in this environment with the heat, and it's, it's an asphalt trail, and there's zero landscaping whatsoever, that it's going to be an issue for us to have to address at some point in the future. And then secondly, you know, we are having an issue with property owners parking their vehicles and protruding into the trail itself. So as a matter of fact, on Friday, I was out touring the city with some finalists for the Parks and Recreation Program position, and that was one of the first things that they noticed as we were doing the trail, that people were parked on the trail itself. So I may be coming back to you at a later date with some stiffer penalties for individuals that decide to use the trail as an extension of their driveway. Because I think Mike mentioned to you at one point that as part of this project, and you'll see it on the photograph there with the pickup truck, we actually paid to extend the driveways of these properties so they could have additional places to park and not have to impede on the trail itself. So, so again, I'm just giving you the heads up. I think we've got to address the shade slash landscaping issue and then the illegal parking on the trail itself. And then hopefully, nobody will make the mistake of thinking that the trail is a travel lane, because from what I understand, we are not going to have bollards-
Correct.
-at the corners that would prevent, are we going to have signage? Do you know of that, that say no motor vehicles?
Yeah, it would be a non-motorized. And, and while Rob is airing his concerns, the one I know that our transportation staff has from a mobility issue is, from a micro-mobility, people utilizing this for golf carts, ATVs, motorized scooters. So, you know, the, up in the north, there's people looking to get from one mile or two miles, typically jump on a, an ATV and down the road, they are to their friend's house. So, you know, there, there's going to be that as well. So there'll be some downstream things that we definitely are going to have to wrestle with once we're done with this, you know, with it being new. And so that's a, that's a third item, I think, we'll be, we'll be hearing about in the future.
I got a couple lights on, and I'm assuming it's in regards to this topic. So Councilmember Tate.
So we talked about signage briefly. Is there going to be signage, like where the grass is along there stating that it is a Sun Trail? And also, will there be anything that you can maybe stripe the road? I know it's tacky looking, but somewhere that people would recognize, you know, like the yellow lines that say you cannot drive here or park here?
I don't have the signing and striping plan for the trail with me, but I will get back to, and I'll make sure I send it to everybody.
But I mean, is it definitely marked, like if I look from here to the trash can or something, I don't see, will there be a sign that says, this is the Sun Trail? I mean, obviously, up here, you, you know that that is, but-
No, it's, so if you look at this approach right here to an intersection, you know ADA requirements require landing mats, you know-
Right, right.
-so that disabled personnel can tell. With this non-motorized trail, you'll notice even here, as we approach an intersection, the state requirements, because of it being that type of trail system, 12-foot wide, not considered a sidewalk, didn't even require that. So there's going to be some unique things. I'll, I'll make sure we review the signing and striping plan and, and see where we're at. And at the next quarterly update, I'll, I'll put some information regarding that in there.
And then notification of the residents all along the trail, that this is not their parking?
And then I'd like to also, I'd like to also explore, you know, is there a possibility, you know, we don't have a whole lot of room, I think. Mike, would you even say there's two feet between back of curb and front of sidewalk where we could, you can't do live oaks there? I don't think there's, there's enough room. Maybe find, you know, work on a plan that we would bring back for funding at a later date to perhaps put some sort of shade trees that don't have invasive root structures to provide some sort of relief for, for pedestrians.
And is there any benches planned? I mean, it's-
No.
Because it is a trail. People do have to rest. Is that something that possibly we can work with through the Rotary or the Kiwanis or something and-
Great, great idea.
See if we could partner with them and, and have, or you could sponsor a, a bench or something and see if we can provide some sort of a sitting area as well. Maybe that'd be the perfect place for some shade, you know, under a tree and a bench.
So I was advised from staff that there is going to be flexible stakes involved, not immovable. So there'll be some, some, some stakes that if they're run over or hit, will be, will be movable.
Right.
So, but as far as benches and signage, we'll, we'll pull up the plan, and we'll make sure we get that level of detail to the council.
Yeah, that's something I think we have to work with the community with. Thank you.
Yeah, Mike, real quickly, can you go back to the funding mechanism slide that had the separate phases? And presently, we are in which phase? Phase One?
We're in Phase One, which goes from Burnsthor Road to Nelson, and then Phase Two, which goes from Nelson to Del Prado. Construction on that one is starting in 2025, and right now, we're designing or going through the process of awarding the design from Del Prado to 24th.
Okay. And my other question would be, how much is this a state-funded project, and how much did the city have to contribute with the first phase?
I, I believe this is an entirely a state project, funded project.
That's what I thought, too. That's why I was asking the question. So my position would be two things. Number one, you know, this is a statewide program that the state is funding. So I think we need to do one of two things. First, we have to see and take a look at other areas of the state that have had this trail installed. What was done there? Were there shade trees? Were there benches put in? And see exactly what other areas of the state to make sure that we're kind of getting the same type of a benefit that they are. And then secondly, if we are going to look at some landscaping, some trees, some benches, the first thing that I think we should do as a city, since this is a state-funded project, is to go back to the state and say, hey, look, these areas, you know, maybe weren't addressed. Can we incorporate any of these concerns in our Phase Two or Phase Three approach? So we, the city, aren't spending our tax dollars. Since this is a state project, I'm not saying that we can't spend tax dollars, but I surely want to go back to the state first and voice our concerns and see if they will maybe install some of the items that we've mentioned here today. So that would be my preference. You know, let's reach out back to the state, voice our concerns, see if there's any funding available possibly that would address our concerns. See what the state has been doing in other cities and make sure that we are getting the exact same type of project that they did. Councilmember Law?
Thank you. Yeah, I agree with the city manager that I think shading in that area would be a significant asset. To the mayor's point, obviously, it wouldn't hurt to ask for the state. I could sense, I imagine, some reluctance on the state if that's not something they're providing for the rest of the corridors throughout the state. That would be a significant ask if they were to have to provide shading for the entire length outside of the city throughout that system. So I would assume that we were going to get some resistance on that. If that is the case, I would still be in support of moving forward in some way or fashion with looking into shading that particular area. Like most other things, it's going to come down to the budget. And that's a different discussion that we'll have. But in general, I appreciate the idea. And I think it would be useful for the users to help implement more use on that particular trail. The striping, please know, it's already, we need something. But if you took a look at the images, it's already a bit of an eyesore. With regards to that, how long with the difference in the shading on the pavement? Is that something that eventually Mr. Chisholm will be more or less the same shade? Or is it a situation where?
Yeah, so if you know, when you drive around throughout the city, wherever we do asphalt repairs, you know, initially it has a deep dark color. And then over time, it fades to like a silver. So if you look in this picture on the left, you could see, you know, the new asphalt, the old asphalt, and then this is even, this is new but older than what they put on the road. So you can, over time, it fades towards a similar color throughout.
So there's a stop point. I understand that and I appreciate that. But when we do the new paving, we do it all as one road rather than a single lane typically, so that there's not some, a head start in the process of...
When the city goes to resurface that road?
Right.
Yes, we'll do the whole thing, correct?
And then, yeah, the driveway issue, you may or may not recall, I identified that as a potential issue about six months ago when we talked about it. It was discussed at that point in time as, hey, we're going to treat it just like we do every other sidewalk that runs through driveways. But obviously, with the length of this, that's going to be an issue. Maybe should have pushed a little further so that we didn't have to delay that process. But I definitely would be in support of that as well because that's going to continue to be an issue. Thank you.
Councilmember Welsh?
Thank you, Mayor. If I heard you correctly earlier, this addition to the driveway was put in with the Sun Trail funds for that resident?
Yes, part of the project.
Okay, so everyone has the option? Like, I'm going to take it? Or you just put that extra driveway in?
I believe it was something that we did because they were losing part of their driveway. So I don't think it was an option. I think it was something that was done as part of the project.
Okay. Yeah, I think that's, I mean, that's good for the residents on the trail because they are losing half their driveway. So giving them a little extra bit, I think, is good. Obviously, policing them with their driveway is going to be an issue. But as far as shading goes, Mr. City Manager, I don't think the city has any more property, you know, to put anything on the, we'll say, the right side of the trail here, do they?
No, I think it's almost at the end of the right-of-way, right, Mike? Right-of-way line?
Yes.
Yeah, so the only space we have is that grassy area there. And again, I'll check with the city arborist to find out if there's anything like, you know, shady ladies that could be installed there that don't have, you know, intensive roots and might provide some shade.
Yeah, I think that's going to be a challenge as far as shading it, so.
I think so.
Yeah. But I mean, try, of course. But I think, I don't really believe that that's going to be possible, but...
Anything I'll mention real quick on that picture on the left? You know, the right-of-ways, a typical right-of-way here in the city is about twenty feet, if I'm not mistaken. You know, if we got three foot of grass there or twelve-foot asphalt area, fifteen. Telephone poles, generally speaking, throughout the city are placed on the backside of the right-of-way. So when you look at this picture, that tells me between the edge of pavement as far as the Sun Trail and the telephone poles, my guess would be that's part of the right-of-way. So that may be something, you know, if you kind of do the math, if you've got three foot of grass, twelve foot, you're probably going to have five feet or so on the backside, more so than the front side, just by taking a look at this particular picture. But that's something staff could tell us at a later time. Councilmember Hayden?
Yeah, since we're, hopefully, you know, and we can actually probably bring this up Friday at the MPO meeting, since the state will be in the room. What, Mike, we're still mandated on this. And I brought this up at the beginning of this thing, that with this trail being twelve-foot wide, that was mandated in order to get the grant, correct?
Yeah, there was...
Because even if it was only ten feet, that provided some extra room that we could have done shading or not put limitations on these driveways. As far as putting trees under power lines, we know that issue, that, you know, we're not going to be able to do that. But I would hope that just continuing discussions with the state, you know, these are the problems we ran into in phase one. What are our options for two and three, since this is your grant money moving forward? I mean, we should be able to come up with some solutions for the next two phases of this, since they're further out. You know, one's basically done. We know the problems now. So I would think if we continue dialogue with the state from our level with MPO or even at the executive meetings, that there might be some solutions here for us. Thanks.
Yeah, one of the things we may be able to look at, too, and you made a good point about shade trees underneath the power lines. As we know, that usually isn't the most favorable spot to put any type of trees. So maybe if we put some benches with some type of shade structure over the bench periodically throughout the trail, may be an option for us as well. You know, because like Councilmember Hayden mentioned, putting trees underneath the power lines, typically, that's going to be a problem later on. And then in addition, if you're in a small area, you know, if it's only four or five feet between the trail and the backside of the right-of-way, you got to be careful putting shade trees so close to the asphalt. We've got plenty of examples throughout the city, especially in the CRA, where it usually does more damage than good over a period of time. So I'm thinking maybe the benches with some type of shade structures throughout the trail would probably be the answer. But that's something that we could bring up at the MPO. And I surely will bring it up at the MPO executive meeting. Unfortunately, we just had one of those last week. But my next meeting, I will bring that up, so. Mike will turn the discussion back over to you.
Thank you. Just to follow up on Councilmember Welsh's question. So if the resident did not want the driveway addition, we didn't force it on them. So it was, it's available and they had like an opt-out, basically. And then I know the mayor, you were talking about the poles being in the PUE on the backside of the property line. I believe that that backside of that trail basically is at the property line. I don't think, even though it looks like there may be two feet here, I think that's just the placement of the pole. But we'll confirm that as well.
Thank you.
So on the road paving program, as of the last quarter, we are a hundred percent complete on the local roads. We're sixty-five percent complete on the major road. The final lifts on the Nicholas Parkway Project West are being completed. And the spot paving money is also a hundred percent complete. And these are some images of the local roads that were resurfaced. And this is the major road that's being resurfaced. The Alley Paving Project, the contract award for that is going to be, I believe, on the next council agenda. And then we'll start that project. And as you know, those are the eight segments that are going to be improved as part of that project. Medium landscaping, we have all of the areas in the green. So right now, Rose Garden is under construction. Chiquita has its notice to proceed in progress. We've already awarded the contract, but we're now executing the start date. We're expecting them to start within the next couple of weeks. Embers is under negotiation for access management. That's the segment up in the top left, segment number five. So with that one, right now, there is a lot of curb cuts along Embers that basically is causing us to, if you were to kind of look at a layout, rough layout now, you would not be able to put a lot of trees in the area because of the amount of driveways. So when we do these type of projects, we bring into access management, which basically changes the circulation, gives us more room to improve the landscaping. So we're in negotiation right now on the access management portion of that project. And then Country Club, which is a project, this is number four. That is funded by the CRA. We are in design and contract development for that one. This is some imagery of Rose Garden. The sidewalk program, we have two and a half million. We met with procurement last week on the design-build-project-delivery method. All of the documents on the front end from Public Works' side, we believe, are complete. Now it's just a matter of procurement, putting that into a package that we can get out onto the street. And then we would be finishing up several projects that are funded at that point with a contract to do design-build. Cetus from Eldorado is ninety-eight percent complete. Skyline behind the park. And Tropicana Park is now underway. That is the crew working there. That's from Santa Barbara over to Aguilinda, Andalucia, I'm sorry. Some pictures. The bubble curtains, at the time of this being developed, we had six of ten. That's in process. There's a picture of the dive team assembling the hoses and basically pulling it out, laying it on the seafloor. Those are all Public Works staff members. Palmetto Pines Golf Course, the design is ninety-eight percent complete. We had a discussion about that a couple of weeks ago here regarding water quality. We are in the process of working with them on their South Florida Water Management permit. And then the Canal Dredging Project, we had awarded that. The contractor had mobilized on site. However, when they got into the system and started dredging, what the survey had picked up as being removable material became immovable material. There was a lot of rock involved. So the quantities that were originally announced as part of the bid project actually turned out to be far less than that. The contractor, the way the bid was structured was all of the pay item was in basically the cubic yard of material to be removed. And so because that was a lot less than what was anticipated, the numbers didn't work out. And so what we did was we canceled that contract with that vendor, or I believe it may be coming back to you all to cancel the contract. And then we are rewriting the bid. We got with West Coast Inland Navigation District, who regularly does dredging, found out what kind of language they have in their contracts for when soil and materials shift or underneath the soil that you find. There's hard bottom, hard pan, how to deal with that. So we're incorporating that into our contracts. We're going to reissue it. And then we'll come back before you to complete this project. Bimini Basin-Mooring Field, that contract was, or that selection advisory process was completed. The number one contractor was selected. And there have been negotiations already started with that contractor. It is Stan Tech and Marine Construction Company. We expect that those negotiations will be complete in the next couple, next month or next couple of months. And the contract can be executed for beginning by the end of the year. Chiquita Boulevard North Widening, this is a project that kind of spun off of the Sun Trail project. So at the intersection of Chiquita and Kismet, there was an interesting alignment where we had two approaches coming in with two-way, two-lane, two-way, and two approaches coming in as a divided highway. So when you got there, there was a lot of maneuvering that needed to happen. With the Sun Trail coming forward, we're adding the westbound lane on the Kismet link to the west of Chiquita. And so when they were putting that in, then it just made sense to continue adding, finalizing that approach so that all four sides have a divided highway. We completed the land donation from the school board. And we are working on completing the construction aspect. So construction for this is fifteen percent complete. And so at the conclusion of this, that entire intersection will be a divided highway. We have some operational projects with the stormwater, within the stormwater fund on Hancock Parkway, basically right here at Cultural. Whenever there's heavy rains, as you're coming over the bridge on Hancock, we get severe flooding in that area. And so what you can see in this image, this area in red, basically everything north of Hancock Parkway, which splits this in the center, all of this drainage has to drain south. And there's only two connection points that are located. So it's some distance away from where the drainage has to get to. A lot of these pipes run through the back of properties. So there's tree roots involved, a lot of ninety degrees. There's not a lot of straight shots. So we have an engineering firm on hand. We selected Black &amp; Veatch to basically take this entire area, look at the square footage of drainage, look at the volumes, look at the peak flows, and determine if we can, what we'd like to do, the same canal system exists on the eastern edge of this, of Cultural. We'd like to see if we can reroute, instead of going through some of these home sites, basically reroute this, you know, collect it and reroute it to the east. So we're analyzing that drainage with them now. But that'll improve the mobility on Hancock. So far this year, we've aligned over ten thousand linear feet of pipes with cured-in-place pipe. So that, we do this where it doesn't make sense to dig up, do an open dig through people's yards or if there's obstructions in the right-of-way that make it such where we can't mobilize a crew. We basically bring in a sock system that gets fed into the pipe. They get heated up, there's chemicals embedded within the material, and it basically cures a new pipe in place. So so far this year, we've done over ten thousand linear feet under contract. So there was a discussion about the boat ramps for fiscal year twenty-three. However, in fiscal year twenty-two, we had already started that project. As you know, there was a couple more we were looking for funding to complete. We've completed ten of them. Ten permits were issued, approximate cost four hundred and fifty thousand. This is the little site plan, but this image kind of shows you, you know, I think we had talked about this, you know, who's going to be able to use these? Is it going to be the residents? Is it going to be the community? You know, these literally fit, as we discussed, on an eighty-by-one-twenty-five lot. So if you look at the house on the other side of the street here, we're on basically a residential lot. We put some perimeter landscaping involved. We do a concrete driveway apron, as is required in the residential area. We have two little stormwater areas to collect any of that water. And then we have the, basically, the boat ramp, and then we stabilize the banks. If there is native foliage, trees, anything that we can save, palm trees, we leave all that on the property so we don't have to put that on there. So we try to salvage what we can. And then in council chambers, we finished the flooring replacement. Fire Station Nine was painted. We've done Eagle Skate Park picnic shelter. At the U Center Activity Room, there was a large bifold room that was divided. We painted that and then also the daycare room. We are done basically with the exterior renovations at the Lafayette Street Building. So this came out very well. The next project on the list for this building is going to be redoing the actual roof. And so probably in the next quarterly update, we'll have that. And then basically, we'll have a renovated building down in CRA. At Coral Oaks, there was a lot of work done there to improve the driving range as well as the car paths. So there was a lot of heaving up from roots. There was a lot of cracked and damaged areas. So we went through with our staff and helped them achieve their improvements. And then in the northwest... And then in the Northwest, there was a complaint by a resident that our property at D and D had some dilapidated docks. So our, our staff worked with a contractor to basically refurbish all five of those finger piers. And that is the look today. Right now, we are in the process of replacing the skate park trailer at the Eagle Skate Park. That's in, in progress. And real estate, we secured, completed the negotiation to purchase the property as part of the GOBON at Multi Sports. So this is intended to be, that site is intended to be future parking. And then in the CRA, we purchased a couple additional sites for additional parking. We've had a few agreements to allow property owners to utilize bridge triangles for their property, but you know, retaining the use of that for, for road widenings and utilities. In our fleet area, there was an old tank that was unutilized. It, it had gone out of service. Our fleet manager was looking at ways to improve diesel exhaust fluid dispensing. So the, the old method basically had our crews that were driving diesel vehicles pulling up to a Napa warehouse, getting a small two and a half gallon jug and then manually pouring it in there. Very time consuming, very, had the travel, had other staff in the vehicle. So we went ahead and actually converted that old tank to a DEF dispensing station. We now take bulk deliveries, the drivers pull up. There's a recognition on the nozzle, dispenses and then comes out of the system. So we've improved productivity and saved time with this conversion. And then we've ordered 100% of the vehicles that were in the city council approved capital asset plan. 43% have been received. And we are waiting on the balance of those. All the purchases were executed. Now we're just waiting on taking delivery of them due to supply chain issues. We are working with the state DEP to modernize our vertical datum system. We are 66% complete on this project. It's, we're basically in year two of three. And in addition to that, we are adding some title stations in the city so that private surveyors and contractors will have this information available. It also helps with our floodplain management rating and under, having developers and contractors understand where the water levels are at certain times and using that datum as they do design work. And we completed a survey at the yacht club for the beach related to not only the GOBON, but if there's a hurricane and it's damaged, we can prove where the material was and how much. With that, any questions?
Thank you. Mike, just a real quick question. I know you identified two different parcels that we had purchased in the CRA for additional parking. Can you identify, I think one is on Vincent's. I can't recall where the other one is. And do we have a plan in place for FY '23 for actually paving or whatever parking that we're going to provide in that area? When we'll have those improvements completed?
Okay, yeah, they're, they're actually both on Vincent's. So on the map you could see, one is north of the parkway, one is south of the parkway. And I believe Paul, Paul?
The, the one north of the, of the parkway, I believe we have completed design. I think it's out for bid.
I'm not sure.
We'll, we'll get you the update on the construction schedule for, for them both.
Yeah, and the reason I asked, I had a couple of business owners in that area ask me that last week, what the, what the plan was and when would the parking, you know, be available, the construction complete and parking available?
Very well.
Councilmember Hayden.
On the bubble curtains, I gave you special dispensation about three weeks ago because you had a diver who was, who was ill. Your slide said six of 10 at the time of the slide. Where are we now and how close are we to having this completed and operational?
I believe we are at nine of 10. And we ran out of the, when we purchased the material, we had run out of a certain type of hose to complete the last one. So I will find out where that shipment or order of what, we had to go back to Solitude and let them know, hey, you were supposed, you know, we were supposed to get 1,000 linear feet of this and 1,000 linear feet is, is not enough.
So in the event of, should discharges ramp up? Or should we have a heavy amount of rain? Or should we face a tropical storm? We can activate nine of the 10?
Yes, and as soon as we get the material for the last one and we'll put it in. And the last one actually operates off of a generator because it's out off, it's at the farthest northern, what's across from Rosen Park. We own a long piece of property. And so that one's actually going to run off of a generator anyway.
Okay, thanks, Mike. Thanks, Mayor.
Councilmember Tate.
Mr. City Manager, could you update council on the building on Lafayette and the progress that we're making as to possibly continuing the lease that we had at the CRA meeting?
Yes, as Mr. Ilchison mentioned, we've been renovating that building. This past year, we've been working on the exterior of the building. And that building currently is leased to the Small Business Development Council. Because we've had some building maintenance issues there, they stopped occupying the building and stopped paying rent. We attempted to negotiate with them. We heard nothing from them. So at the last CRA board meeting, we approached the CRA board and with, we were making a recommendation that we terminate the lease with the Small Business Development Council. However, literally no more than 45 minutes before that meeting, the new regional director for the SBDC arrived. I talked to him. He spoke before the CRA board, made a commitment to the ongoing occupancy by the SBDC. So right now, we are in a negotiating mode with them to probably negotiate a one-year no-cost extension for them to remain in, in that building. This building is, is owned by the CRA. And the reason we are advocating that, as we understand, this past year, with all the construction that, that they've had to endure there, there were issues, there was rodents being caught in the air conditioning system. So there were problems with the building being habitable. And so for that reason, we were, staff is open to recommending to the CRA board a one-year no-cost extension to them.
Thank you. And what did you say the timeline is for the roof, Mike? Do you?
I, I just signed a memo for the roof this past week. So I believe it's coming forward. So I think by the time we get the next quarterly update, that project should be done.
Should be done, yeah.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Welsh.
Thank you, Mayor. Just because I've gotten a couple of emails about it. Everyone is saying how great Nicholas West is looking and how excited they are for that road. It does look really good. The landscaping on that is beautiful and I can't wait for it to be finished. But my question on that is Nicholas East is, seems like it's at a standstill. So do you know estimated completion times on both of those projects? Because one seems like it's soon and one seems like it might be a few months later.
So Nicholas East trailed Nicholas West. We started at Pine Island Road. When we got to a middle point at Santa Barbara, there was some, if you remember, we had that intersection closer, we had to do some extensive work there. And then once that was done, then Nicholas East could start. So Nicholas East is trailing. I think that's supposed to be complete sometime in December. So I think it's, I think it's lagging by two or three months. But that was part of the, like, phasing through.
Yeah, I know it was going to be one later than the other. But when do you think we're going to have striping and the barricades gone and all that open up on West? Is it soon?
Should be this month.
Okay. Excellent.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm sorry, councilmember, you said that you've gotten complaints that Nicholas East, was that a standstill?
No, no, not complaints. I had noticed it because I drive that road when I come here. So I, I noticed that West was coming along very fast and East seems to be where it is. So when he explained that the one has to do before the other, it, it made sense to me, so. But West is looking very nice and I've gotten three or four people.
And there are two different contractors. So the, the, when the West is done, that, that contract will close and, and go into warranty phase. And then East, this end, will continue to, to, you know, go through construction, finalize some work and then that'll close out. So it's not like it's one contractor on both sides. Basically, Santa Barbara is dividing it between two, technically two different projects.
Yeah, and I know back in that neighborhood, we had a lot of complaints last year about water and flooding. And I think the work that you guys did with the drain had just helped because I have not received one yet all throughout this. So I don't want to, I don't want to say it's fixed because they haven't said anything to me. But where I had numerous complaints before we fixed that stormwater issue, now I have not received any this year, so good job.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Ilchison? Thank you, sir, for the presentation. The next item was item 6C, utilities. And I believe, Mr. City Manager, you stated there wouldn't be a formalized presentation, but we do have that in our packet. I know I did review that particular aspect of the agenda. Looks like we have about $149 million worth of projects that'll be coming forward and completed by December of 2025. So it looks like there's a substantial amount of projects in the pipeline.
Yes.
Any questions from council on that particular aspect of the agenda? Okay, seeing none. I think before we get into the next presentation, we'll take about a 20-minute break and reconvene at about 12:40. I think before we get into the next presentation, we'll take about a 20-minute break and reconvene at about 12:40.
...
Okay, I'll call the meeting back to order and we will move on to the next agenda item, which is 4B8 is discussions and we are on item seven, which is the Office of Economic Business Development. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's time for your third quarter economic activity report. We're gonna have your, the city's Economic and Business Development Officers, Sharon Woodbury and Nita Whaley, come to the podium and lead you through this discussion. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. I'm gonna start off the report with just an overview of the components that we'll discuss today. First being key economic indicators, some of the permit activity, business attraction, retention, and expansion information, our activities and goals. So first, we'll start off with our economic indicators. You'll see that we've got unemployment rates for April, May, and June, this being the third quarter report. You'll see in June, it ticked up a bit to 2.8%. And with the comparison to our Florida unemployment rates, we're running about 10 basis points below Florida's unemployment. Below that, we'll get into some of our vacancy rates, retail, office, and industrial. So for retail, we're at a 2.1% vacancy rate. And that is below our five-year average. The rental rates for retail have grown about 5.5% year over year. And right now, the average rate for retail rent is about $19 a square foot. For office, you'll see that we're at a 1.8% vacancy rate for that particular component. It's substantially below our 10-year average. Rents are growing at about 4% year over year for, for office. We have almost no activity happening in terms of bringing on new inventory online. And so that limits our growth until we start to see some of that construction happening. For our industrial rate, vacancy 1.1%. You'll see that that's a trend. Our vacancy rates are very low for commercial right now. The rent rate has increased at 11% year over year in this particular industry. Within industry, within the industrial component, though, we do have the most activity happening in 10 years in terms of construction happening in this area. And we'll talk about how that's kind of lining up with some of our incentives. So I'm going to just skip through what we typically have as far as data for permits. We haven't been able to get that data. And I think that once intergov is resolved, we'll probably have more information that we can provide. Right now, I'll get into projects under construction. And I'm not gonna go through all of the projects because these are a lot of projects that you've seen already. So what I'll talk about are the ones that have changed in status or are new, for your information. So Sprouts Market, that was previously in quarter two, an announcement and in the pipeline. Now we are under construction. Stones Throw is a new restaurant that we are providing as terms of information. That is a new project that was announced. And Prime 239, another restaurant, that's moved from planning and permitting to under construction. These are all projects that we've discussed before, so I'll skip past that. And of the three that we have listed here, the Stranded Judd Creek is one of our new projects that have come online and bringing to your attention. That is about a 99-unit multifamily development and completion is projected for summer of 2023. These are all projects that you have been briefed on before, so we'll skip over that. And for Marina Villas at Cape Harbor Phase One, the last quarter report, it was in permitting and now we are under construction for that particular project. The project that we have new for you to see today is Springs at Coral Shores. That's projected to be completed in spring of 2024, another multifamily development on Southwest Pine Island Road. And these are all projects that you've seen before. These are a list of some of our projects that we've discussed and have recently been completed. And you'll see that the first being Fawcett Emergency Medical Clinic, that was under construction and now it's complete. The others remain the same for Compass and Madison. Those were previously under construction and now are complete. ABC is one that we've discussed before and the status has not changed. Well, it was complete in June, so it has changed status. Continuing on Hobby Lobby, that's moved past planning and permitting and construction. It's now complete. Longhorn Steakhouse has just recently finished and is considered complete. And Coastal Building Supply also is complete. There are two other high-profile projects that Council is aware of. And just to give you an update on that, with Seven Islands, there, there is legislation planned for introduction in September and we're expecting a public hearing in October. And Academic Village, we've just went into negotiation with the successful submitter. And I'll just go over some of our, excuse me, projects that we're highlighting on Pine Island Road. And I'll skip past the ones that you've seen before and give you an update on the new ones. So we've seen Mellow Mushroom before. However, we have a correction in terms of the, the timing for that. It was projected for opening in the winter of 2023. We're expecting the groundbreaking to occur. So that's been pushed back a bit, but it is still happening. Dino Falls is a new project that is proposed by Gator Mikes and this is a mini golf course. The investment proposed for this, combined with Mellow Mushroom, is $15 million. That, that came from the developer. And we are expecting that that will be complete December 2022. For Industrial Warehouse, I'll go through some highlights of that. And 1403 Southwest Terrace, that's a previous project we've discussed, as well as ABC Supply. Pile Island Park, we have an update just on progress. Before you had a rendering here, is it a picture of it under construction? As you can see, it's a very well-designed project. It was mixed-use and warehouse flex space proposed and projected completion is fall of this year. Job creation, 157 jobs and payroll, both of those projected, the payroll amount at $8 million. So I'm going to skip past some of the ones that we've seen, that there are no updates for. And next one we have is the Club. That was in planning and permitting in Q2. It's under construction now. We have a rendering of what that project is going to look like. And at the time in Q2, we did not have that. So here, there's a rendering of what we'll be looking to see for the final product. Spring at Coral Shores, this is a new rendering. It's a project that you've been familiar with and it's been provided as information to you, but we have a rendering for that now, including that in the report. So we'll talk about the Safe South Cape developments. And an interesting fact is that these are the most projects that we've had in CRA since its inception in 1986. So some great activity that's happening there. Madison Square Garden, Madison Square Senior Apartments, excuse me. That's expected to be complete. I think we're within days of that project being complete. Cove on 47th, we had a great groundbreaking for that project, a lot of excitement building around it. And I believe we are still waiting for the last permits to come in for that before you'll actually see construction happening, but they are ready to go. And Bimini Square, that project is under, the, the PUD is under review right now. And so our next phases will be, as soon as that's complete, it will be presented to planning and zoning and then to council for introduction. And I'm gonna talk about some of our data associated with business attraction, retention, and expansion. Again, we do not have the tax receipts for our permits at this time. But we do have a breakdown for fiscal year 2022. As of July 31st, we have collected $712,610 for local business tax competency fees of $4,310. And our total, as of July 31st, $716,920 for activity within that particular fund. And we'll just give a high-level review of some of the activity happening. We have business contacts, the amount of 283 that's been connected with, assisted 131 projects. And our marketing activities, we've had e-blasts, print digital ads, developer tours. We had nine of those and 14 public presentations, four posts on social media. Communications has been great in working with our division and getting that information out. And here we have just an update on Urban Land Institute. In May 16th, we had introductory dinner between the team and key staff in May. Also, the following day, we toured Cape Coral and hosted the reception. Following that, ULI interviewed over 90 community members, staff, council, mayor, and businesses. And then a debriefing report was presented to council. Nita was instrumental in organizing and hosting ULI, which was a lot of work. And we're looking forward to discussing further what our next steps will be. I believe this is going to be a COW presentation. I don't know the date, but that's what we're looking to do for next steps in terms of the final report. And with our goals. Continuing to promote the expansion of warehouse, light industrial, and supply chain and office development. When I went through some of the data before, I discussed that we have a lot of industrial construction happening and underway. And we've worked with a couple of developers in terms of putting together and discussing our incentives. I believe that that has been effective and we're hoping to see more happening in that arena to help us get the numbers up in terms of available space for, for occupancy. We're working on implementation of neighborly software. So that is the software that we've identified and will be working to push out our applications for Cape Competes. We're expecting that to go live late fall of 2022. We were working with neighborly software, just kind of prepping them, letting them know about what we were expecting and wanting to accomplish. They did have a contract where they were working with Development Services first. I believe that all of their programs have rolled out. And so we are now working with them and positioning our economic and business development applications to, to go live as well. For the RFP for issuing an updated economic and business development master plan is underway. I have been working on that and wanting to make sure that as a part of the deliverables, that we are incorporating and exploring some of the recommendations that came from ULI. And so I'm expecting that we'll have that ready to be issued in late October or November of this year. Selecting a master developer for Academic Village, as I mentioned, we are under negotiation with that aspect of the call for offers or call for proposals. And extending and expanding public utilities in South Cape Pine Island, that's still underway. And identifying some of the individuals that the city will be working with in order to accomplish that. And as always, we're continuing to assist developers and businesses in navigating the permitting process. So I just plucked out some of the goals that we are tracking in terms of a finished product. Cape Competes, the implementation and getting that application, we're at about 56% progress of that. Halfway through the economic development master plan and request for proposals, next stage being to put that out and then select the company to provide that. And this, for Academic Village, again, we are entering into negotiation with that. The additional two goals that are new for our report is I'd really like to revamp our website and make it more business-friendly. That is a portal where a lot of engagement happens with prospective developers. And so we'll be working with communications to revisit the website and IT as well and make some changes so that that can serve our purposes. I'm looking at that to be done in March of 2023. And identifying and evaluating new economic and business development programs, which I'll get into, for some of our strategies. So quickly to go through the strategies, these are all strategies that were identified and we've accomplished that. They are fully at the stage that needs to be in order to activate and engage those. And here are a list of some others that are completely done. You'll see that, again, the Economic Development Master Plan is underway. And we're targeting that for November of 2022, issuing the proposals. Completing the quarter plan for Burnt Store Road, our Development Services has been working on that and made some presentations. It was approved for transmittal by council during the August 31st meeting. The adoption of the Edvolorm property tax, requiring voter approval, that will be on the referendum in the general election November 8th. And again, prioritizing utilities and expansion of infrastructure for Corbett Road, Pine Island, and Burnt Store Road are ongoing. We have still, we've identified and still are working towards getting started with the Business Improvement District and the Open Container Zone in the South Cape. For our next task of impact fees, the cost of the study was submitted in the preliminary budget and so that will be determined based on the outcome of that. And we're still working on the following task of rezoning some of the areas of Corbett Road. And then the additional tasks that I'm presenting to council- And then the additional tasks that I'm presenting to council today that we're adding is examining the use of land trusts and bank authorities, land bank authorities, which is an economic development tool that we would like to explore. So we'll be looking at best practices and identifying how we may incorporate that. And finally, the facade programs, it has been gaining a lot of conversation and discussion, both from the business community and I think some of council and CRA. And so we are researching that and will be presenting that information to council. And that's it. Any questions?
Thank you. Any questions regarding economic development? Thank you very much for the update and the presentation.
Thank you.
Looks like the next item on the agenda is number eight, quarterly grant management report, Mr. City Manager. Financial Services Director, thank you.
This may take a second. Okay, Mark Mason, good afternoon, Mayor and Council, Mark Mason, Financial Services Director. Quick update on the grants, quarterly report. This is through June 30th, so anything that's occurred after June 30th, we come back, talk to you about in the fourth quarter report. Quick update, we've applied for four grants during this particular quarter, two federal, one state, one county grant. We have one pending award at a federal level. We have two grant awards at the state level. One was for a police grant. The other was for the FERDAP grant from the Department of Environmental Protection for Lake Mead, which was a $200,000 grant. Here's a list of the grants that we've applied for. One of them has already been awarded. Again, that was the police grant for high-visibility enforcement for pedestrians and bicyclists. Overall, we've got 71 active grants totaling $75 million. We have $52 million remaining to draw. And I have a lot of pages that list out each one of the grants for, by department, for developmental services, the primary grants associated with the, with CDBG, with CDBG grants. And for fire, we have a number of grants that are outstanding to be completed. And I wasn't going to go through all these grants with you, but you can see with Public Works, the lion's share of the grants are all sidewalk grants. And with utilities, the lion's share of the, is for the reclaimed water for the river crossing. And of course, we still have the American Rescue Plan Act outstanding for running the line down to the CRA. And I'm here for any questions you have.
Councilmember Tate.
Thank you. I don't have any questions, Mark. I wanted to thank City Manager on his team that led the TDC. I think it was Matt, Connie Baron, and Maureen. And then having the mayor push forward to get a seat on the TDC made a world of difference for us this year. And we were well-represented and appreciated by the amount of money that we received for TDC. So I hope we continue that next year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Mr. Mason, for the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Next item on agenda is permitting process update. Mr. City Manager.
Actually, Mr. Mayor, I show on my agenda, it's the Budget Initiative status report.
Oh, I'm sorry. I skipped one.
So Mr. Matt Granbo from my office actually has the next two items. So this, this next one, he'll go through this one real quickly. We felt that it was time to, just to give you just a high-level overview of where we are with some of the key projects that you funded in this year's budget. Some of them are included in the quarterly capital reports. We won't spend a whole lot of time talking about those. But we, again, we figure it's important that we just let you know that, you know, when you fund a project, you know, it just doesn't go in a big black hole, that we were actively working those projects. And so we want to report back to you on a quarterly basis our progress in implementing those initiatives. I know a speaker at a previous meeting mentioned that, you know, a lot of these projects hadn't even been started and so on and so forth. And the person was looking at an outdated report. So this is the latest report. You've got it in the, in your background documents. It was never designed to be a complicated report. It's high-level. This is something that we designed in our office that I looked at from time to time and we're sharing with you. I just need to know what's on schedule, what's in progress, what's being delayed. That's why we use the color code system. Nobody has time to go in and read paragraphs worth of narrative. So now I'll turn it over to Mr. Granbo.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council, Matt Granbo, Special Projects Coordinator in the City Manager's Office. And as the CM said, the purpose of this report is really to provide a high-level overview of several of the key projects that were included in this fiscal year's new initiatives. And over the course of this presentation, which should just take a couple of minutes, I'll be discussing projects that have been completed, projects that are in progress, and projects that have been postponed, abandoned, or modified from the original goal. So for the new initiatives that we've completed, many of these we had already discussed previously in this meeting, but a lot of progress with the local road resurfacing with over 62 lane miles completed, as well as the completion of a variety of sidewalk construction projects that you can see on the slide, the completion of the median landscaping improvements on Cape Coral Parkway and Coronado Parkway, as well as the Coral Oaks Golf Cart Path Replacement Project, which is substantially complete with just a few punch items remaining before that is closed. Additionally, we completed Fire Station 12 earlier this year and also recently completed the Pelican Soccer Field 1 improvements, which include some regrading work and other improvements on that portion of the park, as well as multiple facility improvements, including the HVAC system and the UCD warehouse and the sprinkler systems here in City Hall. For new initiatives related to staffing and personnel, we hired a bunch of new critical positions here at the city. Of note are the solid waste program manager and solid waste inspector that are assisting us with our solid waste program and managing our Waste Pro contract, as well as the new positions in parks and recreation, including the groundskeepers, irrigation specialists, recreation specialists, and rangers, which will help us to support our growing park system through the GoBond and other parks improvements. Also of note were the operationalization of the Fire Station 12 with the new fire department staff associated with that new station opening. Here at City Hall, a couple other new initiatives were completed, renaming of community development to Development Services, the renaming of facilities management to the property management division, the establishment of the Office of Capital Improvements, and of course, the new Cape Competes Program that was approved by council. For new initiatives that are in progress, many of these were touched on earlier today. I know that Jeff Pearson from our Utilities Department was unable to be here today, but for the Kalu Tahachi River reuse pipeline, the overland portion of that project on our side of the river is currently under construction. And the sub-aquous portion, the portion that goes underneath the Kalu Tahachi River, is just awaiting the delivery of the FPVC pipe. There have been also some bids awarded for the Pontry Boulevard Potable Water Transmission Main, as well as some improvements to the charter schools in terms of their capital needs. The assessment of the capital needs at the charter schools included identifying five elevators that required modernization. One of those elevator modernizations has been completed, as well as the seal coat for one of the parking lots and the repairs to fire doors. And some of the inspections also identified, as I had mentioned, those other elevator modernizations. What we're planning to do is conduct that work over winter break and spring break of the school year. Because these are pretty intrusive to the school day at the charter schools, the best course of action is to wait until break so that students won't be in the facilities when these improvements are conducted. Continuing on with additional new initiatives that are in progress, the CRA sewer line replacement, which I know that Jeff Pearson probably would have spoken to, was approved at the most recent council meeting last week. And the rehabilitation and relocation of the raw water wells is also ongoing with the engineering design acquisition and production well acidization work currently underway. The North One UEP, as our capital improvement director mentioned, is designed, is complete for the western portion of North One, 75% at the eastern portion. And the Nicholas Parkway improvements, as our Public Works Director mentioned, is nearing completion for the western portion. And the eastern portion is approximately 66% complete, and that's estimated to be completed in January, early next year. Continuing on, you can see on this list the median landscaping improvements that are underway. Several of those are currently under construction and in progress. And the Fire Station 13 design and the construction of the fire and police training sessions are both estimated to begin in 2023. For the new initiatives that were scheduled for fiscal year 2022 that are postponed or the technical term would be abandoned, included the painting and coating of the utilities administration and generator buildings. The allocation for this portion of the project is utilized for chemical and electrical cost increases, partially due to inflationary pressures. The Sorenia Vista Park Public Safety Dock that was originally scheduled for that park has been moved to Tropicana. As part of the city's efforts to purchase and procure fleet vehicles, the solid waste inspector vehicle has also been postponed or abandoned, and they're utilizing the pool vehicle for inspectors at this point. So they're able to have a vehicle and go out in the field without needing to wait for the purchased vehicle to arrive for that, for that particular initiative. And then finally, some of the additional parks employees, there's been some changes concerning a couple different members of staff, of positions here in staff. But of note is the contract grounds maintenance two positions. Those four contract positions are proposed to be reclassified into three full-time groundskeepers in fiscal year 2023, according to the proposed fiscal year 2023 budget. So with that, thank you, and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Tate.
What is, are we replacing the roof at the yacht club?
So right now, we, good question. So we did receive a one bid or several bids. I think we had set aside $200,000 in this year's budget. The actual bids came in almost double that amount. So right now, that project is on hold.
Okay. Were we going, if it had come in, were we going to go ahead and do that prior to the master planning of the yacht club, that whole thing?
So we had started the roof replacement project well before we started the other. So I think that now we're at a point where, I'm going to look through Mr. Ilchison.
Are we in patchwork now? That's why I was wondering if we are going to.
I believe we are in patchwork. Mr. Ilchison is not here. I wanted to see if we can get an update on where we are with some of the other, other steps in the yacht club project. But, but I think right now, we're not moving forward with the roof replacement for the next several weeks at least.
Okay. And my other question was on the unimproved alleyways. I know a while back, we had spoken, where are we as far as like, is all of Del Prado on the west side, all the way up? Have we completed that or where, where are we in that status?
I believe, this is a portion of Mike Ilchison's presentation earlier today. I believe that all eight sections are, have been bid out, and that work, I believe, is going to begin early next year, but I would have to.
That takes us all the way up, right? Through veterans, I believe, right? Yeah, to take us through veterans.
Up to where Phil Deans is.
Yeah, up to Phil Deans office, right. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, thank you very much for the presentation. Now we'll move on to item 10, which is permitting process update. Mr. City Manager.
We'll just keep rolling along with Mr. Granbo.
Yep. Again, good afternoon, Mayor and Council, Matthew Granbo, Special Projects Coordinator in the City Manager's Office, here for your weekly EnerGov and permitting update. So again, for this week's update, we'll be presenting our progress on the 60-day action plan, which is going until Friday, October 21st. Also provide an update on our staff's efforts for testing the 2021 version of EnerGov. I'll provide a staffing update on permitting staff in the Building Division, as well as Information Technology Services. And then finally, I'll have an update for you for the permitting customer service representative compensation and the new classifications that are being proposed for that division. So for the 60-day action plan, we are still on track to meet all of our 60-day action plan goals. We're about one-third of the way through the overall 60-day period, and all of the tasks that have been scheduled for each week have been completed up to today. Since last week's meeting, we have continued our 2021 testing, and we're also preparing for next week's three CCCIA-focused testing sessions. So there'll be one on Wednesday, Monday, Wednesday, and Friday with Bill Johnson and the CCCIA team. We have a full schedule for the testing of a couple different permit types, and Bill Johnson and the CCCI have generously provided their time and a contractor representative from their permitting departments to attend and sit down with staff to go through each of these permit types in the 2021 version of EnerGov. Additionally, we've been working on our data cleanup tasks. There is a series of automations that have been developed by our Information Technology Services Division, Department, that are being revised and retested. The purpose of that is to change the note that will be attached to the permits that are closed, so that is very clear exactly why a permit is being closed. Again, these are only legacy permits that have had no activity for long periods of time, all of them over six months, some, you know, even several years that we're sitting in Trackett. And this is part of our goal to improve the system performance by cleaning up some of this legacy data that our consultant Plant Moran staff, as well as members of the Talon Technologies Team, all believe are causing some system instability and performance slowdowns. Additionally, with data cleanup, we're working on doing manual requested inspection removals. So we are currently evaluating criteria that we can send to our volunteer staff team so that they can go into EnerGov and clean up the nearly 170,000 requested inspections. So again, these are not inspections that are scheduled. They, during the data transition process from Trackett to EnerGov, one of the fields in EnerGov that needed to be filled was the requested inspection date. And so a placeholder date was scheduled of 1/1/2035 for each one of those 170,000. So we're going to have a manual cleanup effort with our volunteer staff members to clean that up, and that will also improve system performance and clean up the data that's in the system. We also met with members of the City of Doral's Information Technology Services Team recently to discuss their experience with EnerGov. They also had a relatively troubled launch to the 2020 version of EnerGov, and they upgraded to the 2021 version. But members of their ITS team had actually created a large number of reporting templates that can help us to establish a baseline for some performance metrics, as well as improve our reporting functionality to be able to provide more detailed reports on how the EnerGov system is operating and how our overall permitting process is operating. So we've received those report templates from them and are looking to implement them internally to be able to generate additional information on how we're doing with EnerGov and additional ways that we can improve the system's performance. Overall, we're on schedule to complete all of our 60-day action plan goals. And again, the 60-day action plan and all five goals expire the end of the week, ending in October 21st, Friday, October 21st. So as I had mentioned earlier, we're continuing our testing. That is our primary focus for the 2021 version of EnerGov. We are on schedule to go live with 2021 on Wednesday, October 5th. This will require system downtime on Monday, October 3rd, and Tuesday, October 4th. The testing's been going very smoothly, and some of our staff members who are participating in the testing have noted that there have been some pretty clear performance improvements while testing the 2021 version. So that's highly encouraging. The city, in the Development Services Department, also is receiving support from Mr. Mark Volks of the Tenzing Performance Management Group, who is assisting onsite three days a week to assist with the coordination and cross-division testing and documentation of 2021 version testing. And as I had mentioned, we are planning next week for three different sessions with the CCCIA to do focus testing and to really work through several different permit types and also receive feedback from them on the 2021 version that we can incorporate into our communications campaign. We want to know the things that surprise our contractor community about the new version and then send out a broad communication to everyone who's impacted by those changes so that they know what to expect when we go live the first week in October. For today's DSD Improving Staffing Update, I'm not going to go through all of this, but we were making very good process, progress with filling the new positions in the Building Division. The plan review technicians and customer service supervisors are fully hired, and there's been major progress on our customer service representatives and other positions that are listed on the PowerPoint. The position that's very difficult to fill is the ITS EnerGov Application Administrator Position in Information Technology Services. We are continuing to interview and recruit members for that position, and we have an additional set of interviews scheduled for next week. So we're hoping to have some good candidates and to get that person on board to assist us with ongoing EnerGov configuration improvements. And then finally today, a few weeks ago, council requested information about ways to adjust compensation and improve the retention and acquisition of Development Services Customer Service Representatives. For the customer service representatives in the permitting division, all of them have been hired at the minimum of the pay scale, which is that 1666 an hour rate. Per city policy. Per city policy, they're entitled to consideration for a 10% increase at the end of their six-month probationary period. So that would increase the base compensation from 1666 an hour to 1894 an hour. And seven individuals have been identified that are eligible, and they will be receiving this increase, and it will be retroactive to the last day of their six-month probationary period. And management will continue to analyze other similarly situated staff members who are approaching the end of their probationary period for consideration for a similar raise. Additionally, several new classifications in Development Services are being developed by our Development Services Team and HR Department. The Job Evaluation Manual and the Job Description Questionnaire, two essential documents that are required for new classifications, have been developed and are under review and analysis by our HR team. And once those analyses are completed and the new classifications are complete, a request to the council and the implementation will follow. And finally, the Development Services, with all these new permitting staff members coming on board, our Development Services Customer Service Team have developed a new hired job training program that mixes both classroom instruction on basics for customer service, as well as in the field, in front of clients, and the EnterGov system training as well. So that hybrid approach has been very effective for us to onboard all these new staff members and get them up to speed quickly. And finally, that, another component of our onboarding for our staff members is HR's New Hire Flight Plan Program, which is designed to break down barriers between the employees and their supervisors, have a two-way communication on expectations, and allow our new hires to receive the support they need to be successful here at the city in their first couple of months. So that's all I have today, and I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation and the update. Just one quick question on implementation of the 2021 version of EnterGov. I heard you mention that it would be implemented on a Wednesday, and on Monday and Tuesday, we will see some downtime.
Yes.
In the computer system. And I'm not exactly sure of the process of the implementation. Any way that we could do that particular implementation, say on a Saturday? Would that reduce any of the effects that the system would have on the prior days? Or is it still basically a three-day process?
I'll take that answer. So, Mr. Mayor, this was a priority for the city to move forward with, moving to version 2021. The only time that Tyler had available to us, if we wanted to wait and do it on a weekend, we would be pushed, I think, back to, I think it was the middle of November, if I'm not mistaken. And so since it was a priority for us, we asked them for a date, and unfortunately, it's during the week. But, you know, we felt that we just couldn't wait for November, and so we'll take the two days of downtime in October.
Okay. All right, and I would assume the two days of downtime, we'll try to work with maybe the public and Cape Coral construction industry to make sure they're aware of those two days well in advance. And I agree, you know, I thought it was worth the question, but we need to get this done sooner rather than later. So that's the only question I have. Any other questions?
I just have one question.
Councilmember Tate.
Are we now doing the roofs, ACs, water heaters, fences? Are those permits now going to be that seamless type of permit, or we haven't gotten there yet? We're waiting on 2021?
So the roofs and the AC changeouts are already at that level. Those were our previous reconfigurations that we did several months ago. For the additional push-button permits, our team are currently evaluating those, but we're really focused on getting to the 2021 version. And then the new Service Delivery Excellence Advocacy Team, that's gonna be the top priority. That'll be our Change Management Group, and so all reconfigurations will go through that group. And it's a cross-disciplinary group, so we're gonna make sure that when we make the reconfiguration changes, it doesn't affect anything unintentionally. So those are definitely in the pipeline. They're a very high priority for us. With the limited amount of staff time that we need to dedicate to testing, as well as running our day-to-day operations of our permitting program, it's really important to just have as much testing as possible so that we don't have any unanticipated issues after go-live. But as soon as that's through, we have meetings scheduled to work on those push-button permits immediately following the 2021 upgrade in early October.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council? Seeing none, thank you for the update.
Thank you.
Item five on our agenda is roundtable discussions. We don't have anything listed. Is any, all kind of lights popping up. Councilmember Welsh.
Thank you. I do have a few items. When I was watching the CRA meeting this month, there was talks of the New Year's event and potentially where that event might be held. And I think there was a toss-up between at the foot of the bridge, or at the, or potentially where we close the road down like we do for Bike Night. So I don't know if the city manager had direction for that, or if we want to discuss what we think is a council for New Year's Eve, or if that event is even still happening with the recent budget changes.
So Councilmember Welsh, if you recall, I want to say maybe a month and a half ago, this topic was brought up by the mayor, I think, during the non-agenda portion of your meeting. We were moving forward with a New Year's Eve celebration. The mayor expressed, and all of you pretty much agreed, that you wanted the New Year's celebration to now be one of our signature events, much like Red, White, and Boom. And it was discussed that perhaps we should move the proposed site of the New Year's celebration. I know we were working with Shea to do it, I think, on 47th Terrace and Club Square. Again, in order to have a signature event and to have fireworks, it was expressed that, you know, this should be on the water, and it should be on par with Red, White, and Boom. So there was no comment from council, and so we took that as tacit approval. And so we've been moving forward and planning on a signature New Year's Eve event that will take place at the foot of the bridge and be similar in scope and planning like Red, White, and Boom.
So my only concern with that is, being that New Year's happens at midnight, and it being geared towards a family event, I don't know how well-attended that would be at the foot of the bridge. I think a better location would be in the Entertainment District, where, one, we wouldn't have to stop traffic that day going over the bridge, and we have plenty of room, and we even have the fire hydrants in place, I believe, to where we can actually close that road down completely. So we've done all these improvements. We've built this Entertainment District. I noticed on the report that the open container area for that is kind of at a red light, but I think this is a great opportunity and a cost savings to the city to move that event into the 47th Terrace area. So I'm just curious what other people's thoughts are on that. I know it's getting late in the season for booking musicians, booking everything for New Year's, because a lot of bars tend to take that on themselves as having parties. So I'm just looking for some council discussion on it, because I think now's the time to do it.
Are you finished?
Yeah.
Councilmember Nelson.
To answer Councilmember Welsh real quick, before I get on what I wanted to ask a question regarding. I do, you know, after thinking about it and being out and about, I do think, I think my biggest concern is closing that bridge on New Year's Eve. And the only reason I say that is because I know that the last ball drop we had with Shea, where we partnered with Shea, and it was in the entertainment area. You know, it was already a challenge, parking, getting vehicles in and out, and for folks to leave, to leave the event once the ball dropped. So I would be open to discussing that further at a future council meeting. Mayor, if you were inclined to do so and add it to an agenda. But the more I think about it, I feel that maybe the Entertainment District would be a much better area for that type of event because of the midnight timeframe. So those are just kind of my thoughts, but I'll go, you know, I'll listen to what everyone says about that. But what I wanted to talk about, Mayor, and I'm sure you and other councilmembers received some notices when we had our boil water notice, for the public's information, are we able to, Mr. City Manager, talk a little bit about how people can get registered for the LEALERTs? Because I've gotten, I'm gonna say like 10 emails about folks not being notified other than on social media, mostly elderly folks. And so I've given, I got information from our communications team, and I passed it on to those residents. But could you talk about that briefly publicly?
Yes.
So that people can know where to go to get registered, so they get those alerts, like for the boil water notice.
And let me address one of your points first, and that is that, because we have heard from many people that said, "Well, I didn't know about this until I went to Facebook." Well, the fact of the matter is that we use all tools available to us, to include social media and Facebook. And the fact that they were able to find out through social media, and I'll have Melissa and Mickey come up to the podium to also provide her insights. The fact that they found on the social media shows that our communication efforts are in fact working.
I know. I think it was just the alarming of, you know, because people, some people got the alert, and some people didn't, and they were all alarmed about.
So you brought up, you bring up a very good point. So there is a tool available to our residents to be able to go online to lealert.com, and they can register. They put their information in the system, email, text, actually, multiple emails, multiple phone numbers, where they can be notified in the event of an emergency. And so we utilize that tool that Lee County offers to all of its municipalities. And I know that Lee County sent well over 83,000 or 85,000 notifications out. So that shows that the AlertLEAD program or LEALERT works. We need to continue to boost our efforts to educate the public, and we do that every year right before hurricane season starts. And remember, each year, certainly since I've been here, Chief Lamb gets up to the podium, and he gives you this big presentation on how our residents can be prepared for emergencies, and that's part of, typically part of his presentation. But Ms. Mickey will make sure that in each of our monthly updates that we send to all of our residents, that we continue to stress that they need to be able, that our residents need to go online and register for this program. In addition, our residents and businesses have a way of going to the city's website, and you can sign up for automatic alerts from the city's website. And so I will tell you, I probably got notified 15 different ways, because I think I signed up for everything. So there are multiple ways, and I just want to send this message out to the public that we use multiple tools to convey the message. And so it may be that if you sign up for all of them, you may end up getting notified repeatedly on a particular issue. But that's okay. We'd rather deal with X, and we want to make sure that people get the word. And also, Ms. Bice is at the podium. Did you want to chime in on anything?
Yeah, thank you for asking the question, Councilmember. And some of you may have seen a recent media story about the number of people that were notified, and I think they mentioned that 200,000 people live in the city, and all 200,000 weren't notified. Well, let's put that into perspective, right? All 200,000 people, first of all, aren't adults. Some of them are children. All of them aren't on the city utility system. We did enlist the county AlertLEAD, which people can register through at alertlead.com. We, our staff at the EOC reached out to the county, and they graciously assisted us. The purpose of alertlead.com is to send out emergency notifications. That went out to 84,000 people, and the only way to receive those notifications is to register. And as the city manager mentioned, there'll be even more, you know, marketing of that website so that even more people are aware of it. But like I said, it did reach 84,000 people that are registered. When you register on the website, you pick an area, and Cape Coral is one of those areas.
Right.
We're working with the Public Safety Director at the county to have the ability to potentially message on our own without having to reach out to the county to push the message for us. But they did that, and they did that pretty quickly on our behalf. And as the city manager also mentioned, you know, we utilize Facebook, Nextdoor, Instagram, Twitter. The electronic message board out front had the messaging. I was probably answering people's questions on Nextdoor that night till almost midnight. Our Facebook posts alone reached about 50,000 people. So we hit a lot of people in the city. We recognize that we might not be able to hit everyone. But, you know, if you're not watching the local news, and you're not on social media, and you're not signed up for AlertLEAD, if somebody else has any other recommendations on how we can reach people, we're open to those recommendations. Somebody mentioned to me that we should have put out traffic signs. Well, an entire citywide boil water notice would have taken thousands of signs and lots of crews to put messaging like that out physically on the roadways. The bang for the buck is certainly being able to reach thousands of people much quicker when you're utilizing some of these other methods. Certainly, we did press releases. We know the media got those. The media interviewed the city manager and our utilities director that same evening. So I'm happy with the number of people we reached. Of course, there's always room for improvement, and we'll continue to push the alertlead.com registration process.
No, I appreciate that, and I've done the same. Any resident that's contacted me since, I've just pushed that out to them and say, "Go here," you know, "for the future," and, you know, told them that yes, social media works, obviously, because that's how most people heard about it. But then the response I get back is, you know, "I'm over the age of 70, and I don't use social media." So then I say, "Okay, well, go to your computer and do this." So I appreciate that, and I appreciate all the efforts that y'all made. I did watch the live broadcast with the city manager and Jeff Pearson, and I would just say, you know, maybe next time, we might include the mayor in that, just so, if you're around. I mean, I don't know. I just know that in the past, I've seen other mayors that have done like those EOC live things, and I don't know if it's just important just to, as a figurehead, or for information, just my feedback. But thank you. Great job.
Councilmember Tate.
Thank you. I don't know if we're gonna talk about it now, but I support Councilmember Welch's discussion. I think when we said, because I was trying to remember, the city manager, when you said, "We supported an event like Red, White, and Boom," maybe that's where we, I didn't think we were gonna go to the bridge, but maybe because Red, White, and Boom was at the bridge was the reason. But I definitely believe that this should be on 47th Terrace. It's dangerous to close the bridge on New Year's Eve. It will not serve any purpose for all the business owners that are in the southwest part of the Cape that have a really big following. I mean, Weston has a New Year's Eve, Cape Harbor has New Year's Eve, so you're gonna keep people from coming across the bridge. They're not gonna go to the midpoint to come down. And really, it was a family-friendly, and because all the restaurants and bars had their own vans, the city spent. I asked Mr. Mason for a budget, because we did get the budget from 4th of July, which was very expensive. So I asked him for a budget expenses for New Year's Eve, and I haven't received it yet, but I think it was minimal comparative speaking. And it is the biggest night of the year for businesses to make their money, so I hate to impede them in any way. And so you're gonna bring all these food trucks and all these other vendors, and then we have all these businesses that are trying to succeed. So I hope we'll reconsider that and have some more discussion on it. Thanks.
Okay, I do believe, while we're on this discussion, I think we have to make a choice today, what we're doing. I mean, we're in the middle of September here. You know, we've heard, this is the second discussion we have. Whatever direction we go in, we gotta let staff know, because, you know, the conversation that I recall before, we talked about closing the bridge. We talked about having it at the same exact location. Now, if there's a change in the direction that collectively council wants to go in, that's fine, but we gotta make a decision and stick with it one way or the other, because all we're doing is having staff run in circles now. So I think that decision, definitely, we need to get a consensus today, what direction we want to go in. Councilmember Hayden.
Yeah, I don't mind 47th Terrace. You are a little constrained, though, with being able to walk if you put food trucks and things on that. I guess I was looking more, you know, I was saying, you know, what's the fourth event we could put on Cape Coral Parkway? Not to the bridge, but to Del Prado, where we have the Holiday Festival of Lights. We have the Arts Festival. You know, we're able to draw more of the community out there, because there's room to put things for the kids to do. There's room to do other things. So I was looking at it more, closing down the Parkway from Del Prado to maybe Vincennes, so that you can utilize the whole CRA area, not taking it all the way out. Not taking it all the way out to the bridge, because we know how successful the Arts Festival is and how successful Holiday Festival of Lights is. So I don't have a problem with 47th Terrace. If you want to look at the Parkway, that would be my suggestion for just that part of it. Take the bridge out of play.
Councilmember Chapin.
Yeah, I agree with a lot that Councilmember Tate said, that we don't want to hurt businesses that are having events and cutting off access to people that are gonna attend them. So I believe the bridge idea is not a good idea.
Councilmember Law.
Yeah, I'm leaning more in the direction of what Councilmember Hayden had suggested.
Yeah, I'm leaning more in the direction of what Councilmember Hayden had suggested. That's kind of where my mind went as well. I think Forty-seventh Terrace may be a little constrained, when you think about the scope that this might, people this might reach. I'm not objective of that, I do think that it would be nice to have the bridge open, but for me, like the Holiday Festival that we have down there is an example of what my mind was, where my mind was going when we were talking about this type of event, where you've had the access to come over and to the bridge, but we still utilize one of our larger areas on the Parkway to be able to have the opportunity to have anybody that wants to come from the community come without being constrained. So that's where I'm kind of leaning.
Councilmember Long, I'm sorry, Councilmember Cosson.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. City Manager, do we lose anything, or, I guess, is there a compelling reason that we should not be moving the location?
Is there a compelling reason to not move the location from the bridge to somewhere else in the CRA?
Yeah, I want to hear your take.
Well, I mean, right now, we, listen, it can be done, we're moving forward with it, so whatever reason people say, you know, it can't be done, I think all of that can be overcome, just like we do on Red, White &amp; Boom. The problem we have right now is that it is mid-September, and a lot of the acts, a lot of the fireworks companies, the companies that are responsible for sound and light, most of those already are booked for New Year's, so that's our biggest struggle right now, I think, to try to find the entertainment, the lighting, and all of that. But in terms of, you know, the physical aspects of it, it can be done, you know, you're right, there is an element behind businesses that are typically open on New Year's that, you know, perhaps could be impacted by this. It's certainly something that I really didn't even think of, think of until today. So, I mean, the bottom line is, I think, you know, we're moving forward, or we're going to do an event, whether it's going to be at the bridge or anywhere else, and it's going to be a successful event. That's how we're approaching it. So, again, if you want to do it on Forty-seventh Terrace or Cape Coral Parkway and Forty-seventh Terrace, we'll make it happen. If you want to do it at the foot of the bridge, we'll also make it happen.
Thank you.
Logistically, there's some more challenges, obviously, you know, associated with closing the bridge, and then unlike July 4th, where we typically have the fireworks go off around nine, nine oh five or so, you know, if we're doing fireworks, we're talking about doing fireworks at midnight. Not everybody stays up on New Year's, and, you know, we do have that large condominium complex right there at the foot of the bridge, and so I'm a little concerned with that, but it's one day a year.
Okay, I can get behind moving it then, thank you.
Oh, and if I may, I understand Assistant City Manager Barron is at the podium, and she can, she's been working actively with staff on preparing for the event. If I can ask her to just brief us on where she is?
Sure.
Sure, thank you, Connie Barron, Assistant City Manager. So our special events staff, when they put on an event, they want it to be successful. So if council directs them to put an event on, they will do that. I will tell you, just as the city manager mentioned, there are many challenges associated with doing a New Year's Eve event at the bridge, and one of the biggest challenges we're facing, well, the city manager mentioned, we can't get national acts, it's going to be, it would be a local, local band. We are having trouble even finding sound, a sound company to do the sound. We also are going to have some significant challenges getting volunteers, and volunteers really make up the whole, the real, the heart of what we do in special events, especially for something like July 4th. You have to have quite a few individuals volunteer. We have had some people express some concerns about volunteering on the night of the year where there are the most drunk drivers out on the road. There's also some concerns that when we do the Fourth, everything wraps up around nine, ten o'clock, then we can get to work and get the bridge reopened. When you have something like this, the fireworks don't go off until midnight, so you're already running way behind, you're creating nineteen-hour workdays for some of these volunteers. So, again, we know that we want to have a New Year's Eve event, I can tell you that there are some challenges have been expressed to me by my special events team, and you know, you know them, they want to put on a good event, and wherever you say to do it, that's where they'll do it. But there will be some significant drawbacks, I believe, to using this particular location. Forty-seventh Street, yes, it is a little tighter, but at the same time, we don't know exactly what kind of a turnout we're going to get for something like this. I don't think it's going to be as big as our Fourth of July event, because there are so many other things that people can do if they want to go out and celebrate New Year's, but a lot of people would rather stay at home than go out on New Year's Eve. Over time, the cost will be significant, because this happens to fall on a weekend, so we will have, it will be a huge cost. We have not identified really a high-profile sponsor that's willing to ante up enough money to be a high-profile sponsor, so I don't mean to be Debbie Downer here, but I do need to express from my special events team and also Parks and Rec, some of the concerns that they have if we try to do an event at the bridge.
Yeah, I'll weigh in real quickly. You know, one of the desires that I had with New Year's Eve is trying to make it somewhat of a family-oriented event as well. You know, just having it on Forty-seventh, it may help those businesses on Forty-seventh, but I have spoken to some businesses that support an event on Forty-seventh. I have spoke with some businesses in the last week that do not support the event. So for me, my desire was to have some type of an event that it could be family-friendly. Now, one thing that Councilmember Long mentioned, something to like the Arts Festival on Cape Coral Parkway, maybe we can try to combine the two, where if we have an event on Cape Coral Parkway that is more the family-friendly event that could spill over onto Forty-seventh in the later hours, maybe that's a win-win for everyone. But for me personally, I was trying to do something that was more family-oriented for the community. I know myself, as a ten, eleven, twelve-year-old child, I remember driving to the park, setting up, and watching fireworks at midnight. So that's kind of what my thought process was originally going down that path, but I do believe that we can have an alternative to that process where it could still be a family-oriented event that could also spill over maybe onto Forty-seventh, because as we all know, the difference between Cape Coral Parkway and Southeast Forty-seventh Terrace is a matter of a parking lot that you have to walk across. But I do believe that as a city, we need to make sure that we are putting on an event for all ages and all of our residents, not just for the bar scene on Forty-seventh. So I think we need to find a compromise where maybe both of those environments could succeed in one event, and I kind of like Councilmember Long's idea, with something similar to an Arts Festival that on Cape Coral Parkway. Sounds like staff isn't quite prepared, maybe we started this process too late anyway. So I don't want to throw something together that's not a success either, and I know a lot of these types of events are planned out well in a year in advance, so maybe we're a little late to the game, so maybe we can come up with a alternative along the way. Councilmember Welch.
And I can tell you that the special events group, they already have some great ideas for the family-friendly part of it, so.
Okay. So, yeah, reaching out to the family-friendly part and also letting it spill over, we do have that entire parking lot there, so it's not just those four corners. So we could expand the event into Big John's Parking Lot, maybe expand it, because, I mean, if we're looking at the Arts Fest, the Arts Fest works on Cape Coral Parkway, because you basically have all your vendors in the center and you walk around it. So I don't see people walking up and down Cape Coral Parkway on New Year's Eve, just for the simple fact of that. You know, the stores there aren't going to be open on New Year's Eve, because there's going to be people standing around. So if we were to close the bridge one year, yes, you would have the fireworks as your main attraction, you'd have the big stage down there as your main attraction, but like the Assistant City Manager said, we don't know how many people are going to be coming out. So to expand the area from Bike Night, where typically is those four, that four corners, we could maybe expand into Big John's and bring in those family-friendly ideas to happen during the day. But as she said, we're kind of late to the game, so doing something this year, I think maybe we plan next year for Cape Coral Parkway, or just kind of, I mean, we do Bike Nights, they know how to set them up, they know how to break them down, the city's very good at that, they've already done, you know, four of them, so in the sake of time for this year, if we are going to try to do something, I would suggest using the Big John's Parking Lot and that area. If not, then let's just start planning next year, because at this point, it is kind of at a make-or-break state. And I don't think that we need fireworks, I believe the residents are going to provide enough of that at midnight, that the city doesn't need to throw a bunch up. You could do a ball drop that's more symbolistic with New Year's than fireworks, so to me, I think if we put something together with a ball drop and then let all the residents light the sky, I know my dogs would appreciate it, so.
Yeah, if we have any type of event inland, you know, fireworks is off the table, I think, you know, just for safety reasons. Councilmember Tate.
Well, my special events team does have some ideas for that, too.
Well, that's what I was just going to suggest. We probably are not the people to make the decision, because we're not special events, and we're not the ones that are going to go out and seek the fifty, you're going to need at least two hundred volunteers. I've done Fourth of July for twenty years, and trust me, it's a lot of work, and asking people to do it New Year's Eve is going to be really tough. We did the ball drop, and we did beach balls, and it was very family-friendly in 2020, and all the bars had their own entertainment, all we did was get the police band and provide our blow-up stage, and so it was much cheaper for the city all the way around. But whatever we do, I think we should ask staff what they think they could accomplish and bring it back to us next week, because we say Cape Coral Parkway, we don't know what it's going to entail and how much they're willing to do, so I know I've talked to staff, they have some great ideas, but I think we should ask them what would be the easiest thing to accomplish before we say what we want to do. I'm on Cape Coral Parkway or Forty-seventh myself, but I need to know if staff can even handle it.
Okay.
Because don't we get, I'm sorry, don't we get Rotary, Kiwanis, we get all those other organizations, and, I mean, you're talking about Big John's Parking Lot, you've got nine restaurants right in that Big John's Parking Lot, there's no way you're going to be able to use that parking lot for anything. They're all having New Year's Eve events, so, yeah, it's going to be a challenge, but I think staff should be the ones to tell us what they can accomplish.
Councilmember Shepard.
Yeah, my experience with New Year's Eve in Cape Coral has been, you know, at midnight, you know, the kids all go outside the house and you see fireworks, the entire city, I mean, they're everywhere. So I'm for the city not spending money on fireworks. I think we should think outside the box and maybe do something that other cities never done, and maybe do things for the children and young families. I think that should be more of the bigger target, some kind of entertainment during the day for families, and like I said, I don't think we have to worry about the party and bar scene, because all them organizations already plan their own events and take care of that. So I think an investment for the city would be to have something for families and children during the day. So that's my input.
Are you talking about during the day or in the evening hours?
During the day, because I think most people, even people with young children, they don't want to be on the road, they're afraid to drive around. So during the day, I think they all feel safe to go to some kind of event, but as it gets late, they don't want to drive around with their kids in the car, you know, I mean, that's how it's been with my family. And for seeing fireworks, I mean, I think anybody at any house in the entire city can walk out their front door and see fireworks all over the place. So I think if we wanted to do something special for the community, I think it should be like a family fun event during the day, and then we don't have to worry about impeding traffic and things like that.
Councilmember Long.
Yeah, first of all, credit where credit's due, I would hate to see Councilmember Hayden get the short end of the stick here, he was the original one that brought forward the idea for the Cape Parkway, I was heading in that direction, but he got me on that, so.
Okay, sorry about that.
Yeah, but I was happy to support it, happy to support it and elaborate on that. I think at this point, rather than getting into the minutia about what we think it should or shouldn't be, I think the point here is that we make a decision on where we want it, and then we'll let staff handle the rest, so I would suggest that we, however we want to do it, or however we need to do it, we go ahead and take a poll here and see where we want to go, so that we can move on to whatever else is-
Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I just want to throw one other point out. As we move forward with the planning process for this New Year's celebration, our friends over at the South Cape Hospitality Association were not shy to express their views on the event. You know, what they expressed to me was that they were well underway with planning an event on their own, they shared with me that they felt that the city then came to the party at the very last minute, and it's hindering their plans for moving forward with the event that they were planning this year. So what I would propose is perhaps just working with Shea this year on the event that they're having, making sure that that event is successful, and then perhaps next year, doing a much larger, larger event, in conjunction with not only Shea, but the CRA as well.
Agreed.
And what type of financial support are you talking about?
So, Mr. Mayor, right now, we have budgeted for next year a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for additional community events and celebrations, and there's New Year's, a cultural day over at Cultural Park, so that's how much we have in total, extra, so, but we also have money within the special events budget that we can utilize for an event, you know, sometime next year, or to assist Shea with this year's event.
And do you have a dollar amount?
I don't, I don't know what it's going to take, I think, you know, I need to have more conversations with Shea. I didn't get into many of the details with them on what they were planning, but I know they told me they had already bands lined up, they just needed our stage, they had the ball, and a bunch of other things already in motion. So maybe there isn't a whole lot we can do for even Shea this year, right, other than perhaps marketing support and things of that nature.
Councilmember Tate.
So that's what I was going to say, since we've got this, why don't we have staff and Shea figure it out, and then come back to us and see how it looks? Because, I mean, we can't really make that decision compared to what everyone is talking about, so that would be my suggestion. I love Cape Coral Parkway, I love Forty-seventh, I love all the ideas, but if Shea has already started and staff from Parks can figure it out, then let them work together, come back and tell us how we're going to celebrate, that's all.
I know staff was looking at, when you, at Southeast Forty-seventh, as more of a thirty to fifty grand amount that we would have to put in there to put on some sort of an event there, whereas it would be closer to over two hundred thousand to do something at the bridge.
That's why I think it would be best for them to come back with a recommendation after they've met with Shea, and see, and then next year, we can do something different.
Yep, and I think when they were thinking with the family, and I understand what the Councilmember Shepard is saying, what they were looking to do is more start in an early evening, and so, because, so it's not real hot out for one thing, but then planning some things for the kids, whether it's street performers and some small local DJs and bands right there, and then allowing some, whether it's a ball drop or something else that would occur early, and then the families and the kids could leave the area before all of the alcohol consumption really takes place.
I don't know if y'all were there for 2020 when we did it, but we had exactly that, we had street performers, we had all that kind of stuff walking around, we had clowns, we had mimes, meme, whatever they were, mimes, so we had all kinds of things going on, yeah, not memes, mimes.
Was that only on Forty-seventh or-
Yes, no, we did it on Forty-seventh, and we did it from the Del Prado end to the Coronado end, the whole thing was shut down, and then we did the ball drop in the middle, we did beach balls, we threw out beach balls at nine o'clock, because we knew the kids would be anxious, so we had, I don't know, five hundred thousand beach balls that we blew up the day before, and then we passed them all out, and they were all up and down Forty-seventh Terrace, and everybody loved it, and then we had the fire truck that brought the ball down, and that was that, so.
I think that that's what Shea has, has.
Yeah.
And I know she mentioned to me, or representative from Shea.
Mentioned to me that they already had the, the beach balls in place and.
Yeah, they blew them up.
Councilmember Wolf?
Yeah, I was going to bring that up, exactly what Ms. Tate said, that it was done on, on Forty-seventh before. When I was mentioning earlier using Big John's lot, I mistakenly said Big John's. I was saying we could expand it into the Iguanamia parking lot, which is right there. So instead of allowing people to park there, if we needed a bigger area, that, that parking lot there would be where, you know, residents could come down and participate in the daily events. So I was saying, continue on that corner, but also extend it maybe into the Iguanamia parking lot for that specific event. Would allow us more room than like per se a Bike Night where it doesn't go that far. So that's what I was meaning with that. But yeah, I would, I would be in support of doing it there. And then maybe planning something in the following years out on the Parkway, if it's something that's, that's a big attraction. But for the sake of time, I think that's where we need to do it this year. As far as cost goes, I don't see it costing any more than a Bike Night. We already own the stage, which is what would need to be rented. You know, you're just getting all the other pieces that the city already has. So I don't, I don't see it as a huge investment to the city to try to do this every year at that spot. Thank you.
Any other discussions? I think it sounds like majority is Forty-seventh.
Yeah, let them consider what they're planning this year and we'll look at something bigger next year.
Yep. Give you the direction there, Mr. City Manager.
I got it.
All right. All right. Any, the only other thing I wanted to mention, since it was brought up at the roundtable, was Lee Alert. I'll be the first one to admit, I'm not registered on Lee Alert, but I will be. And I think that it's very important for the city and our communications department to try to get that information out there to our residents. Because that system, if that's going to be the system that we're going to primarily utilize to notify our residents, we have to make sure that they're participating in that, in that, in that program. Because if they don't register and we do an alert on that system, then they're not going to be notified. So I think that we have to push that particular program, if that's the mechanism that we're going to primarily utilize for, for any emergency events here in Cape Coral. So hopefully, Mr. City Manager, you could get our communications staff pointed in that direction and make it a priority. I think we need to try to put that on our city webpage. I think that we need to try to put that in our quarterly on-the-move paper and take every opportunity we can to really push that mechanism if that's what we're going to utilize.
Can I ask a question about that?
Sure.
Do we have a Code Red? I thought we used, we did.
So we used to have our own standalone Code Red system.
Oh, okay.
However, the county offered the service at no charge to all the cities.
That's what happened to it.
So it really made no sense for the cities to have and fund duplicate systems.
Okay.
When, you know, you already had it available at the county. And so again, there's nothing wrong with the county system. It just requires individuals to register to be notified.
Okay. Well, you had to register on Code Red, too.
You had to register even if we had.
So I, I just, I wasn't sure if we still had that. But, and you could ask LCEC and I'm putting on the water bills, too, electric bills and water bills. I know.
So through this, we did discover, however, that, you know, there are improvement, improvements to be made in terms of all of our communications methods. And for example, we discovered that utilizing our utility system callback capability wasn't exactly where it needed to be. It was, it works just fine when you're notifying targeted geographic areas, but there was a problem to notify all of our utility customers at once. So we need to work on that. And also, there's a time limitation in terms of when notices go out through the city's utility system. And so we're going to work towards improve, towards improving that as well. So if there was an event that's late in the day, say nine o'clock at night, that we will still call people out utilizing the city's utility billing system.
Just real quick, Lee Alert, how do they notify? Is it by telephone, by these devices?
Yeah, they call you.
So when you, when you register, you actually put in all of the above?
Okay.
They put in everything.
Okay. Yeah, because I think it's important. I mean, I have enough email to check on the city, so my personal email, I probably only get to about every other day. So I'd hate to send out an email to somebody and they, they don't get it in a timely manner. Just nine out of 10 people today have one of these in their hip pockets.
Yes. So I remember, Mr. Mayor, because I too was not registered until this happened, it didn't give me a choice to identify which mode I wanted to be contacted. It asked me for all of the modes. And I will tell you, I got numerous phone calls. So I think they, they use all of the modes that you put.
Yeah, redundancy.
I mean, if you have a landline, you call them, you call them everything.
Okay, that's good. Councilmember Wolf?
Yes, I had one other thing. Tomorrow is the first Board of Trustees meeting for LCEC since we had them here. And I had stated that I was going to be going there. So I just want to let you guys know, I was offered a chance to speak or if I wanted to address the board. I noticed in their agenda, they don't have any citizens' input. So I opted to say yes, that I would like to address the board. So I'm going to just share with them some of the concerns we've all received from our residents and hope that it, they can find some solution. So that's what I plan on speaking about tomorrow. Just want to let you all know.
Report that to us, would you?
I will bring back a report on Wednesday.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Shepherd?
Yeah, the only thing that I wanted to mention that is in other situations like the water incident, I've had a lot of citizens express to me why the mayor wasn't part of it. I think because of the role of mayor, I think a lot of citizens feel that in emergency broadcasting or information like that being put out, they were, they were curious why the mayor wasn't involved. It didn't, it didn't bother me in any way. I'm just, I'm just venting for the public of what people have, have expressed to me, that maybe the, the mayor be involved with in emergency situations with.
Sure. So let me.
I think it's a comfort thing. I, I don't know what it is, but a, a lot of citizens were like, you know, was the mayor part of that? Why didn't the mayor reach out to the public?
Let me, let me address that if, if I can. So the honest answer is that there was no reason whatsoever that the, the mayor wasn't there, other than the fact that this was such a fast-evolving circumstance that I didn't have time to reach out to the mayor and, and say, "Mayor, can you come over to the, to the EOC?" As you know, when it comes to, to emergencies in the city, the city council really does not have a role, at least during the first few hours of the emergency. That is completely delegated up to staff. What we typically have done is during hurricane season, when we have advanced notice that, you know, there's something brewing, like there is right now, something brewing in the tropics, we have a lot of advanced notice. And we can prepare and we typically work with the mayor, bring the mayor on, online. And the mayor does serve as our spokesperson during those types of emergencies. Because we have the time. Again, this one was literally off, you know, one phone call, run to another phone call, run downstairs, talk to the mayor, run upstairs, call all of you, run over to the EOC. It was literally unfolding rapid fire. And so we just didn't have time to, to notify the mayor and bring the, the mayor on board. So.
And I'm in no way saying anything wrong was done.
Oh, no, no, I'm just.
I'm just expressing what, what different citizens have said to me.
No, I understand. And I'm explaining why that didn't happen in this case. That's all. I don't want anybody to think that the mayor was either disinterested or not here because I, he was here at City Hall. I did brief him. I was in his office. So it's not like, again, that it was something that staff did or the mayor did. It just, it just happened. It evolved. And then later on, it was decided that around eight o'clock or eight-thirty or so, that we should do a, a, a quick press conference, if you will, with the media. And, you know, I just didn't think about inviting the, the mayor to that.
Yeah, for me, City Manager and I had a conversation that day. I just happened to be in the office. I think it was about 5:00 PM. I think he had just been notified from Department of Health. And he had called and said, "Hey, I got something I got to talk to you about." Came down. He updated me what he knew at the time, but it sounds like he got some additional information thereafter. For me, moving forward, what I would like to see is anytime there is an, an event similar to this, which I classified as an emergency event here in the city, whether it's weather-related or any other type of event, not only should I be notified right away, I think council should be at least given an email as quick as possible. So we're all apprised of exactly.
Yeah.
And I think we did get that email.
Yeah, we got texts.
But anytime that the EOC is activated, whether in, on a limited capacity or a maximum capacity, I think I should be involved in that process. I'm not saying that I have to be in the decision-making process, but I should at least be involved in that process. And Mr. City Manager and myself have had that discussion. I'm sure we'll, we'll work those parameters out. Moving forward, I sat at home, like many of us did, not knowing about the, the, I believe it was an online social media, that communication that you gave to the community. It was yourself and I think Jeff Pearson.
Yes, we.
That's right. We streamed it via Facebook.
Yep. And that's exactly how I saw it as well. I didn't know about it. I didn't know it was going to occur. So I, I watched along with everyone else. I would just hope in the future that the, the circumstances will just be a little bit different. So I'm a little more involved. That's all I have. Any, any other comments for roundtable discussion? Okay. Time and place of future meetings. We have a regular meeting at the Cape Coral City Council is scheduled for Wednesday, September 21st, 2022, beginning at 4:30 PM here in council chambers. Is there a motion for adjournment?
So moves.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Meeting adjourned.